We have Robert here. Oh, yeah, looks like he is on. Robert, can you hear us?
How are you, Karen?
Still calling in.
Oh, pretty good. How about yourself?
Good.
Who needs weightlifting with all that stuff you gotta carry around, huh? It says his name up there. Is that his participants? Oh, okay. It'll pop in, okay. I haven't heard anything from Blaine. I would assume he's coming. Jared is not. So we'll give it a minute or two longer and then we can get started.
Was it a choice? I didn't know we had a choice.
No, no. Jared was, is out of town. And Robert is going to be a little bit late, so he was gonna try to join electronically. Sounds like that's him. Hey, Robert, can you hear us okay? Do I need to, do I need to speak louder? Robert, can you hear us okay?
I don't know, but I have this feeling he's gonna come on strong when he-
When he does? Gonna be booming loud? Karen, are we, are we a quorum if there's three of us but one is online? I can't remember. I think we changed something about that at one point, because it used to be you had to have a quorum in the room.
There's Blaine.
Oh, there's Blaine. Okay, we're good. Does the state allow it if it's electronic?
I know it changed a couple of years ago, but I can't remember if it was just for voting. So, I'll look into it though, so if it comes up again, we'll be prepared.
All right, let's get started with our work session. Leslie, you're up first with the fraud risk assessment.
So this is something the auditors require, so we're just completing it. I casually input it in your packet. Do you have any questions? I went through and completed it to the best that I could.
I, I did. The two items that were not marked, well, two of the items that were not marked, yes. Our employees and elected officials required to annually commit in writing to abide by a statement of ethical behavior. That seems like an easy thing for us to implement. I mean, I, I know I, on some of the other boards I've served on, we sign a little thing committing to ethical behavior. I don't know that we're doing it now, but we ought to implement it, because there's no reason to not get those points and there's, it's not a difficult thing for us to do.
Haven't we done it in the past, though? I mean, we had to have done it last year. Because this is the same question as last year. So what did Stacy have in there for us from last year? It's a question I have, because we did complete that, or-
I thought we failed it last year.
Yeah, we didn't do it last year.
We may have failed. I don't know.
So for 2020, what was the last one you did? 2020?
2020?
You did not have, you didn't have number four, number five, or D.
Of the form that we fill out, saying-
No, that's a conflict of interest. Not that one.
Because the ethical behavior thing should be pretty easy.
It should be easy.
I mean, I signed one for Wasatch Integrated.
Which, which we do have the ethical behavior. We don't have anything on reporting fraud and abuse, that I know of. Which is 2D.
So- No, down there, sorry, number four is in the ethical behavior.
Number four is, so if we have that, that should be yes, right?
Well, I think you guys have, but I don't think we, or the other elected officials do anything.
Ours was just for conflicts of interest.
That's what I thought, too.
Yeah, that's all it was, was conflict of interest.
So can, can we just maybe reach out to another entity and see what they use for this ethical behavior form? Get a copy, let's make sure we're good with it, and then send it out and get everybody to do it. It won't count for this year, that's fine. We're still in the low fraud risk, which is great. But it would put us in the very low category for next year if we do only that.
What about number five? Have you guys taken that training online?
Yeah, so we do-
Not this year.
We do that training every year. In fact, we've had-
Oh, I didn't this year, though.
I haven't done it either, online. But we could. And maybe we need to just make a better effort of doing that. It has to be done not just by us, but all elected officials.
All elected, yes.
It just says within four years of term of appointment.
Yeah, that's it. So we've already done it once.
So we've done it.
So you're good, then? Okay.
I'm assuming, well, we probably ought to confirm that the other elected officials have done it.
Okay.
But if they have, then they could probably-
Well, it just says have all governing body members. Wouldn't that just be the commission?
Oh, yeah, you're right.
Well, it asks for also-
Governing body, that is just a commission.
Local special service districts and their local entities. That means everybody, cities, towns, we gotta make sure everybody does it, not just us.
But it does say governing body members.
Within four years.
So yes. That would actually count, right?
Robert?
I'm not sure whether they're just talking about the training for the Opens Meetings Act, or if there's another separate online training.
Yeah, because we've done the open, open-
Yeah, you're right. It's probably not the Open Meetings Act. It gives the website, it's training.auditor.utah.gov.
I don't think that's the Opens Meeting Training, which is the training that we do on an annual basis, so unless Stacy arranged for the auditor to come in and do that training, which we did have some training from the auditor, I think, about a year ago.
A year ago.
I've, I've, if not, we can certainly go on the website and do it.
It's a different training. There's an introductory training for county officials. I'm looking at the website now.
It's the one within four years of term appointment.
So we need to work on getting that done, so we can select it for next year.
And then on 2D, reporting fraud and abuse, I couldn't find any policy regarding that. We probably ought to look at, or obtain a policy for that.
It seemed to me like we had one last year, because I know Matt and I had to review it within what Stacy was doing. I think we ought to ask her what she had available.
I couldn't find anything on-
Couldn't find anything? Do we have anything for the others, like travel?
Yes.
We do have all that? Yes, okay, pure curtain.
And I have copies here. I copied everything to put in my file, so that I have everything for next year.
So we should work to get a, a-
So I just, I think those three things, if we work on those, I think we're, we're good.
And on 3A, it says, does any of, any of the members of the management team have at least a bachelor's degree in accounting? Who do we have? Do you?
Alex is our-
Oh, that's right.
Alex is part of our management team. I called him, made sure that that was okay, that we included him, and he said absolutely, so.
Okay.
We're good, because we have him.
Because there were some other questions I had on the, the whole thing. Let me find it.
So I'm gonna-
When you're ready to go to the next part of this.
I'm gonna email out right now the link to that training for county officials. From the state auditor's website to the commissioners, so we can work on getting that done.
And then after you, if you approve it tonight, I just need you to sign up Mike, so I can get it posted to the state auditor's website.
Okay, sounds great. Sorry, go ahead, Commissioner Fatco.
Okay, on the basic separation of duties. Says in number three. It has, are all the people who are able to collect cash or check payments different from all the people who are able to adjust customer accounts?
So the only customer accounts we would have would be garbage.
Okay.
And the treasurer's office collects your payments. Cindy has the avail, the ability to adjust customer accounts. So they're two different offices.
Okay. And then there were some questions I had on the reconciling of the bank accounts. It says, does someone other than the clerk and treasurer reconcile all bank accounts or original bank statements reviewed by a person other than the clerk to detect unauthorized dispersments?
At this point, Alex is doing the reconciliation.
Okay, I wanted to make sure that what he was doing. So then later on, it talks about that no one should be opening that bank statement, except that, unless there are, let me find it here.
Which number are you on?
Uh, let's see. I've got a million questions here. Okay.
You talking about seven?
Yeah, let's figure it down. Oh, here, this is in the same line of who checks who. Does someone authorize payroll payments who is separate from the person who prepares the payroll payment? Is that supposed to be Cassell, or is that somebody else?
So Cassell prepares them, I review them.
Okay, so then on 12, it says, does someone review all payroll payments who is separate from the person who prepares the payroll payments? That would be you?
Yes.
And then on 10, it says, does a person who authorizes payment for goods or services who is not the clerk verify the receipt, verify the receipt of goods or services? Is that Penny?
Yep.
Okay, I wanted to make sure that was all pinned on correctly there.
I don't see anything about opening an envelope.
Yeah, there is. Unless I was really dreaming last night.
It's on the, it's on the credit card one. On number seven.
No, it's another block.
Purchased card or credit card statements received directly from the card company-
Keep going down.
By someone other than the cardholder.
Credit cards, I manage the credit card account, and the, all the bills are sent to the treasurer.
They're sent to the treasurer?
Mm-hmm.
And they just-
And then they're dispersed to the department heads.
Okay, and says here under original bank statement, mediating controls under definitions. Means a document that has been received directly from the bank, direct receipt of the document could mean having the statement, one, mailed to an address or P.O. box separate from the entity's place of business; two, remain in an unopened envelope at the entity's offices; or three, electronically downloaded from the bank website. The key risk is that a treasurer clerk who is intending to conceal an unauthorized transaction may be able to physically or electronically alter the statement before the independent reviewer sees it. So the treasurer, um, where is it? I read it. It's okay. I just wanted to make sure we're doing everything right. Okay. I can't find it.
He didn't trust your wise.
Huh? Oh, I, I, I do, it's just the matter.
Okay, any, any concerns with the fraud risk assessment, as prepared?
So this is on your agenda, under consent item for approval later on in the meeting, so just put it clean out. Thank you. We'll get it signed and posted to the website.
I had a question here, number six. Of the fraud risk assessment. We put Tony on this, and it says regardless, regardless of license or formal education, does at least one member of the management team receive at least 40 hours of formal training related to accounting, budgeting, or other financial areas each year?
That would again be Alex.
That would be Alex?
Yep.
Not us?
I verified that with him.
That's not us?
He's part of our management team.
Right. I just wanted to make sure it was, it wasn't us that had to comply with that.
I ran this past him, and he said that he is the person.
Okay.
So that's true.
We can tell the auditor that. Okay, I'm fine with it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Cindy.
So Leslie has told me to get all the fees together and bring them to you, and we're gonna discuss them. We've done parks. I would like to start with parks.
Before you, before you get started, I got a big question for you. All these things have been in existence forever. And we haven't made adjustments to hardly any of them. Except for the ones that were just recent, and there's a lot of things in here that are just plain outdated.
Very much so. I've been looking through, and your sheriff's department, what the city pays, I think, may, everything needs to be adjusted applying.
Yeah.
So, my thoughts were, we'll do the small things, and then maybe have your department heads run through their, because I know when Bailey was here, she, her and Lance wanted to adjust the planning and zoning permit schedule, and so maybe that can happen, really sort of fasted, I don't know. But if your parks, like for instance, with the parks, I've called and looked at four different cities with the buildings, with their parks. Airports, I've called two different airports and got what they, what they charged for their tie downs and airport hangers. I went big to Wasatch County, Heber City, and I went small to Brigham City. So in between, there, let me, let me just give you a couple of, couple of roundabouts of what they have. So Heber City, their tie down overnight is $45. Ours is $5. Brigham City, she was giving back with me. I haven't got Brigham Cities, but like their airport hangers. They're, they say garages is $140 to $170, that's usage. And then they get, they get a different on like gas with the fueling. They'll get, they'll get a hanger plus fueling for $170. But when our airport hanger's $12, this is a build airport hanger, and he's getting back to me on the building part of the air. He said $12 is per foot, so that just gives you a little bit of the difference between Morgan and Heber, which they have big jets going down. I get it, orgies. They started talking Cessnas and, I'm like, whoa, whoa. Like a four-seater, two-seater. I mean, I got educated really fast on that one, so. Your parks department, I just give you, and we're pretty, we're pretty in the area. They are I went Brigham City, Sunset, Clayton, and Roy, and they're, they're $30 for residents, and non-residents, $60, so they're double. So we're, we're right there with the parks.
Is that for, is that for the usage of the parks, or is that the-
Yes, for the usage of the parks.
Okay, I thought you were talking to the airport.
Sorry, I jumped from the airport to the parks.
Is that for a four-hour block then, or a three-hour block?
Um, yes. I, I think it's three hours there, but we're at four hours. Your Kent Smith built, we moved it to $10 an hour. Instead of a four-hour block at $40, we just did an open one-hour block for $10, which is barely beneath that.
Coaches could not have it for four hours.
Yeah. The rifle range, I haven't got anything on the rifle range, the 15 and 75.
We redid all this?
Yes, but then I need the backup of, where did you guys get, I just need the backup of, where you got the $15? We just can't pull $15 out of our hand.
Okay, so we raised it, and then we, everybody started complaining, because they can go to Weber County and go to their shooting range, which is nice. We went through all that stuff, so that's who we compared it to, was theirs.
I just need the backup, and this is the backup that I received.
Like, you need me to print off their fees off the internet or something?
Well, we need to do it in a public, we have to do it correctly, like in a public meeting, which we're in a work session, public meeting, and then adopt the prices that we're doing. So, we're halfway there.
So what was the deal with this happening, we go to the state level?
Well, the auditor wants, or the state requirements are that the prices we charge have to be reasonably tied to some analysis of the cost to use the facility, so that it's not for profit, where we're saying, okay, it costs $25 to run it for a day, but we charge $50 per day. They, they don't want it to go above that, and so if we say the cost to maintain the, the fire, the gun range is X amount, or every time it's used, there's this cost of, you know, then it-
Employee time, equipment, whatever.
There, there's probably something that we could tie it to. I, I think that we, I mean, we'd be safe if we were ever audited, because they are so low across the board, but for purposes of complying with the statute, they want us to be able to cite and tie it to some reasonable calculation that we've done.
Okay.
So shouldn't we, I mean, this, as I was reading through, it seems just to me like we are shooting in the dark at this point. Is there any kind of an analysis that we could actually take from state records, or maybe what, or actually maybe what we need to do is have a project that is basically a personal project of somebody? I don't have any more time. That does a complete analysis to what we do with each one of these parks, and how much it costs us to run those parks. I think we could, if we could do that, we could actually have a real good cost analysis as to what it is that we need to be charging. And if people don't want that, then okay, the property taxes have to go up. You know, if you don't want to pay for it, then you gotta have the property taxes go up. I for one don't want property taxes going up. So that means if we're gonna use it, we ought to have a use, I mean, it ought to be analyzed enough to where we're not just shooting in the dark, oh, it's 10 bucks an hour. I can promise you, we can't afford to pay our maintenance people to go down there for 10 bucks an hour. And so I think we really, I mean, we're not doing it for a profit. All we're doing it is to cover our costs. The cost of those that hit, you want to use it. Now, does it mean that we have to charge them an outrageous price? No, but if they're gonna use it, you know, have the cost.
But I think that our constituents believe that their property taxes pay for some of this.
Yeah, and they do.
They do.
Absolutely.
And a lot of people believe that garbage, garbage services come out of the taxes.
Come out of property taxes. So I mean, all I'm saying is, is yes, I agree with you, but let's get a complete analysis to, I mean, it's gonna be a project. Maybe we could have, and that's something I'm gonna go through in the covenorship or comments. Maybe there's somebody out there, a college or university, that could possibly do a project on a cost analysis for this. That would be a great, one of their, the projects you have to do to get a college degree. I had to do a few.
That, I get the project, but that's timing.
But it's not timing, yeah, so that's what I'm saying. For now, we could, we could throw out something.
I think for now, too, kind of what Commissioner Wilson was saying is, if we compare it to other ranges, and of course, we don't have a range master, but we also don't have 20 slots, you know, it's just one range. And, and so even if it's to justify, well, we're not paying for a range master, but their costs are X, they charge this per lane, we're charging this for the whole thing without a range master, but if we're
It's not hard to justify the cost of what we're doing, for sure.
Yeah, yeah, I think that that's a way that we can justify the cost with some analysis. I think that's more the concern with the requirement in the statute, is just having some reasonable relation to why we chose that number. I don't think raising it even to what we've raised it covers the cost-
No.
-at all. And so we, we all know that in our mind, but to jump through the hoop, the statutory hoop, if we can have comparables, and and then we distinguish it by saying we don't have a range master, but we also only have one slot that you can rent. It's not, you know, you've got your own individual slots.
Four, four-hour period.
Right, and this is what it costs to maintain it. You know, it costs at least this to maintain it, it's comparable to these others, and so I think that would be the reasonable tie to something that is more than, well, I think it should be that.
Yeah.
Right.
It may not be as detailed of a cost assessment if we had somebody professional come in and do it, but I don't see any reason why our department heads over these various departments couldn't look at their budget and say, well, I'm paying somebody $20 an hour, and they go up there an average of five hours a week, that's $100, and, you know, we spent X amount on fertilizer at the parks across the board, we spend X amount on fuel for our equipment, we spend X amount on equipment, we depreciate that over five years, or whatever it is. I don't think it'd be that difficult, or, or even that time-consuming, probably in a couple hours, they could come up with a pretty, pretty good analysis of what it costs them to provide that service. I mean, dog licenses, Clayton could probably, you know, we could look at it and say, well, Clayton's salary is X amount, he spends so much time on dog licenses, they come into the office here, and we have office time where somebody's, you know, dealing with the resident, and that's X amount of time. We could probably quantify that out pretty quickly, and it may not include all of the costs, but it'd give us a real good idea.
I got a heads up from the auditors that this will be something they look at for 2023, and they want to see all that. They want to see how we came up with that cost. So it's something that we have to put together and submit, so that we have that for our audit.
It seems like what we need to do then is come up with- Maybe a, a template that they could fill out, like an Excel spreadsheet template that just says, okay, here's the, here's the facility we're talking about, or the fee we're talking about. What are the employee costs? What are the physical facility costs? What are the clerical costs? Are there any other, you know what I mean, like supplies, and maybe we could list all those things, and you may not have something in every one of those categories, but, but you might, and maybe if we had something like that, that's a simple template, we give it to the department head, and we say, go through this and fill it out the best you can, based on your budget and your actual costs for this particular fee. Do you think that would be enough to-
Start?
Yeah, I mean, at least gives us a, now, later on, maybe we could find somebody that's willing to do an analysis, but that'd be a great starting point for them, too, like, hey, here's what we're, we're analyzing, this is what we've come up with, you take a look at this and see if you think we're missing anything.
Yeah, so right now, we just need to comply with what-
Yeah.
Right now, also in the current records of what we had back in 2005, or '06, or '07, or '08, or '09, I don't know which one it was. One of those that was done, it had an exact, you know, it costs us this much per hour for so-and-so to go this far, and for somebody to drive this distance, and, and it was one of these 200 pages that we looked at.
I think it's on your clerk's.
Of the clerk's office?
We could do something simple like that and take just like the, the standard mileage rate and apply it, right?
Yeah.
And say, well, if, if we have to drive from Morgan to the Croydon Park, we apply that, that amount, you know, every time, and they go three times a week, here's the, you know, here's the amount. That should be pretty simple. We could put that into a spreadsheet, too. Like vehicle trips or whatever.
How many times we go there to take care of the garbage out of it, or, you know, whatever it might be, because I mean, it was a pretty good- because I mean, it was a pretty good analysis, what it was done, but things have changed, and, I mean, and then there's some other things.
How about in the meantime, are we set on the parks? What do we need to get that set in? Well, not set in stone, I know what we need to do, but.
So we just need to add that, Croydon Bowery needs to be added on there at ten bucks an hour.
What about the camping there for the?
That's on the bottom at a hundred dollars.
Oh, a hundred dollars, okay.
Um, and then we have been doing an, an out of resident, then a non-resident.
On the, the Croydon?
Yeah.
Well, on everything we were doing.
There was a non-resident on everything.
Yeah, a resident, a non-resident. Now, originally, we had said three times the amount, maybe we ought to change that, I don't know.
We'd already changed it.
We changed that.
So you don't have a copy of that, I'm taking it.
Didn't we change it to double instead of triple?
It wasn't even, it wasn't even double, it was like one fifty.
So that's what I got here.
So like fifty percent more on each of them?
So just fifteen bucks an hour is what you're saying on the?
On the parks.
On the parks per hour? When you had?
It was a ten to ten, ten AM to ten AM.
On Croydon?
Do you want me to send this to you?
Yeah, Croydon, the, the camping.
Uh, parts into one reservation and change a hundred dollars for the date for resident and three hundred for non-resident is what I got.
Yeah, that was the original one, but then we talked about changing it to being less for non-resident.
Yeah, if you could, 'cause I don't have that apparently. And the auditorium, I've got a, the City of Roy, what they charge for theirs, it's fifty dollars per hour, community room and great room at seventy-five, five dollars per hour, so.
And we're doing a hundred dollars per day, or it says?
Half a day.
Half a day.
Oh, half a day.
We go from twelve to twelve.
So that's a pretty good deal.
Maybe they need up their, update theirs too.
Compared to fifty bucks an hour.
Yeah.
So keep that one, right, or?
Well, I think you need to have Brett fill out the analysis.
Yeah, let's do an analysis and see.
But as of right now, we keep what's on the website, right?
You can't, you can't change anything that they hold.
Yeah, yeah, we can't change anything on the website.
This is what's on the website.
Yeah, yeah, we keep this.
Because that's what's on there, get all the analysis back.
And I, I mean, to, to your point, Matt, I don't know that we want to charge exactly the cost for all of these facilities to our residents. I mean, there is a portion of it that, that should be covered by their, their property taxes, but it would be good to know, you know, if it, if it really costs us more like two hundred dollars an hour to rent the auditorium, by the time we factor in the heating and cooling of that facility, 'cause it's not real energy efficient, and the cleaning and the, you know, maintenance and such, well, maybe we're severely undercharging, or maybe we need to do something different with that, you know, I don't know. Or maybe we're okay, maybe we're over, I don't know, but that analysis is gonna be key.
Then I'll bring that, when do you want it back? Do you want it back for the first of?
How long do you think it's gonna, so we need to talk about our next meeting, actually? Because our next meeting is supposed to be during UAC, I know Matt's gonna be out of town.
I'll be there, you'll be there, Jared said he's gonna be there.
Yeah, so there'll be several, several of us, we won't have a forum, so we need to talk about moving that meeting.
So the first of December, and it goes into our work session, right?
Yeah, that's probably a good idea. Do you think, do you think that gives us enough time to put together a, a template and get it out to the department heads and get them to fill it out?
I'll get that, yeah. Um, with the dog licensing, he's already brought that to you guys, and he wanted to change it to a three-year dog license for twenty-five dollars.
And we did, we did approve that.
We passed.
I thought he said, I thought you guys said that I was gonna bring it to a.
We had to do a public hearing, you're right. We agreed to the amounts, but we haven't done the public hearing.
Yep, we were just gonna ratify it, I thought.
That's what we were gonna do, was ratify. 'Cause we had already done this.
Yeah, I think you're right, we'd agree, can we do that on a fee change?
On a fee change, that does have to go through.
Do you think we can ratify it in a public hearing?
Public hearing? Well, if we did it in a public hearing.
If she present, presents a fee schedule to you on December sixth, you could hold a public hearing December twentieth, and it would be done before the end of the year, is that, will that work, like?
I mean, we, I see what you're saying, like if we circulated it administratively by email, and you said, okay, this is what we're planning, and then we put it out on the agenda or the notice of the public hearing, it's, we still could have the public hearing on the sixth, we just couldn't approve anything. It would be like a, A, we, we all give the nod after the public hearing, then we'll vote on it.
So December sixth, not December twenty, correct?
We can hold the public hearing and vote on it right then, if we do it all on, all on the sixth. That's what I would try to do.
So you have your budget hearing that night also, but we, there's no reason for me.
Unless it has to be held in the time.
December sixth?
Let's try to do it then, and then.
So Cindy, I just sent that to you, and it also has a, a explanation of how we.
Come up out?
How we would like to do the nonprofit and qualifying organizations that ask for discounts.
I was wondering, could we do, could we get an application for them, and just keep it on file?
So, yes, so what we, what we put on there was, it'll, their name will be saved and put, so we don't have to, so they don't have to come before us every time.
Yes.
So that's all on that email I just sent you.
Okay, great, then I will.
That's what I presented in the, in the meeting.
And then we'll just keep that in the office.
Okay.
All right, I'll see you December sixth.
Garrett, you're only worth fifty-two cents per minute. You're only fifty-two cents per minute. You're worth fifty-two cents a minute, that's what it says in here.
Per minute.
That's what it says, fifty-two cents per minute.
Well, it's pretty good.
Oh, like if someone comes to talk to me, we can charge fees now?
No, this is for the business license fees.
All right, and then the, the last thing for work session discussion, there was some, some questions and some confusion on the budget, the wage and benefit line items for the budget. Julie's working on some updates, um, and will have us some updated numbers. I guess there's some confusion with two different spreadsheets, so we're trying to get that hammered out to make sure we know the exact amounts. Yeah, and hopefully it's, it's not as big a difference as we originally thought. Any questions on that right now?
Is there a percentage that we can find out what is being paid for benefits, I mean, the benefits, retirement? 'Cause I tried looking even at my own, they says it's, oh, it's online, and I says, no, it's not, and they won't give me any information, there's two people that can get it, you and Kim, that's it.
I would call and make sure I have the right number, 'cause I went off the number that was in here from previous.
Okay.
I'll make sure I have the right number.
Because we're putting in actually money for every single one of us, it's going in there.
Into retirement, or are you just talking FICA?
Nope, retirement.
There is?
That's what's on this spreadsheet, and that's why I was questioning, plus it's like I.
I didn't think there was any benefit for.
Yeah, there is, talks about it in the Utah retirement system.
Okay. Have we always been putting it in?
Yep.
We've always been putting it in?
I don't know if it's always been put in there, but it was online, talking about it specifically for part-time, um, for salaried part-time commissioners and council members were supposed to be going towards retirement, and we're supposed to be, and according to what I read, there, it's in there.
So we better confirm that it's always been in there, 'cause I don't know that it has in past years.
It was for when Sarah was talking to me about it last.
That's good.
Couple of years ago, two or three, four years ago.
But if so, none of us have any information on it.
Right, right, and that's something we need to find out.
But you just have to get your own logins, I can't even check your account story, but I can find out what's been going on.
Okay.
All right.
What do you want to do about the requested budget corrections?
Yeah, let's, let's talk about those, so you sent us out some budget requests. There's a spreadsheet called requested budget corrections, it was in the email that Leslie sent out yesterday, earlier today. And there's several items in there that we need to talk through and figure out what, what these are, and if we're accepting these as part of the budget, it does change the bottom line pretty significantly.
Yep, it does.
I would like to suggest that we postpone that until the next meeting, and let's go over and get it straight.
You can't, you can present for a budget on December sixth at a public hearing.
What I'm saying is, is at our next meeting, are we going to have the next meeting on the twenty-second of November? Because that still gives us two weeks between the twenty-second of November and the sixth of December to, um, to be able to do that.
Yeah, I would like to do it on the twenty-second if, if everybody's available.
Matt, you'll be back, right?
I talked to Jared about that previously, and he said he was available.
You'll be back?
Uh-huh, I'll be back.
Does that work? That is the week of Thanksgiving.
Right.
But it's a Tuesday, so it's a couple days before.
I'm here.
Albert, are you okay with the twenty-second?
Okay. So we need to put out a public notice then on that, changing that.
Yeah, so we'll need to change our commission meeting from the fifteenth to the twenty-second, reason being that we're gonna have several commissioners out of town the week of the fifteenth. So, um, you wanted to postpone for the, the discussion on this for the purpose of what now? Commissioner Fracchero?
What's that, sorry?
You wanted to postpone discussion on these budget corrections?
I think we ought to at least have a chance to go over them in greater detail after we find out the other budget problem, and see what we've got, whether or not we can.
Yeah, so, um, are you suggesting a, a longer work session on that, or what's your?
Either a longer work session or whatever we need to. I don't know what you guys' time is, I can work it out.
So we've still got fifteen minutes in this work session? I wouldn't mind maybe asking some questions about some of these, and we've got, for example, the sheriff's office here, we can talk to them about their request.
Is it?
We can talk to the attorney about his, which is a decrease, so we're gonna say thank you and pat him on the back, I think.
You'll approve that one.
Yeah, I won't, I won't argue that one at all.
And then we can talk about the HR item as well. The other, the other folks are not here, so maybe we do those separate, but if you're okay with that, let's at least ask them. So Garrett, thank you, appreciate that, is that one, that's a decrease from?
It's from the temp legal, and when I was reviewing the budget, I saw that there was still that same amount of twenty thousand dollars, um, which I appreciate, but I thought, you know, if, if we do bring another associate attorney in, and I would imagine that would decrease quite a bit. There's just two pretty significant criminal cases that I've conflicted out, and so to have a little push in there to bring someone else in would be helpful. So I, I just thought if we decreased that down to the ten thousand, hopefully we wouldn't use it all, we could turn it back, but that would give me a year with the transition to see if we even need any there, or maybe just a smaller amount.
Are there any objections if we have Leslie make that adjustment in the current budget? Proposed budget, I should say, everybody good with that?
Not wrong with me.
That ten thousand dollar reduction, okay, perfect, so let's make that adjustment.
Just, just an FYI, I have to have the budget ready on my counter by November twenty-third Republic inspection, so if we do that meeting the twenty-second, I will hurry and get those changes made, and that would be a very helpful step.
Okay, perfect. Let's talk on the sheriff's request, we've got a new employee request, employee in benefits, about eighty-six thousand in employee and fifty-eight thousand in benefits, do you wanna maybe give us some background on that?
Uh, so we actually kinda screwed up on him just a little bit.
Okay.
Because we're, you guys are gonna take Austin, we're already, we're still budgeting for half his wage, so we just need to come up to half of that, you know, whatever the remaining wage that he pays. The benefits we already have because Austin's currently in there, his equipment, vehicles on Alaska is already there, so we don't need to replace that.
Austin was not budgeted in your budget for twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, it's moved, he's, he's already moved over, so this probably does need to be the full amount, if you're talking a replacement employee, right?
Yes.
Oh, you gotta move it?
No.
It's already been moved over to the emergency manager budget. So this is a, an additional employee request essentially?
It was just a replace.
A replacement request, okay. Any questions?
Well, I guess my only question is, is that seems like a pretty expensive new person.
Why, we don't know what we're gonna get, we just put him on the top end, so we don't know what. I mean, you put out there for applications, whatever, whoever puts in.
But I mean, what are you putting out for, an application for?
Anybody that sort of.
A deputy? And a deputy starts at ninety grand a year?
If he, if he's topped out, we didn't know what to put, we don't know.
So if we hire a deputy and you say they're topped out, why are they topped out? They have never worked here.
Because he's already been in the hiring system, and you hire, and you're hiring with their levels they're at.
Is that a state requirement or something?
If we don't, we'll never get anybody hired.
So, so I have a question along with his line, um, we put two people in the academy.
Yes.
Can we do that again?
If we can get, if we get the right person, we don't have anybody.
Have, we gone out and looked for him?
Yes.
Because I mean, if we found two people that were not actually, you know, possibly in our even coffers at that point, can we go out and try to find two more, or two, whatever it is, and, and get that? I mean.
That, we can try, we can try whatever we want, but it's just, that would just.
I wish you'd heard something before, by, by doing this for Austin.
I'm just wondering if we ought to, we need to discuss that.
I agree.
One hundred percent, and I don't know if we do it here or where we do it, but we need to discuss it. Because at that point, an emergency manager.
Then we're just doubling our, we're doubling our costs.
Yeah, and, I mean, I wouldn't mind going in and, into an executive session for ten minutes with the sheriff here and talk to him.
Well, we can do that at the end of the meeting.
Well, I don't know if he wants to stick around.
Okay, well, there's some information on that, I, it sounds like we'll wanna have some more discussion on that, maybe we can get some more detail.
Basically, again, that's just worst case scenario, yeah, we, we do want a newer guy. Two to five year guy, but.
So I mean, one option is we could say, look, the best we can do budget-wise, because we are tight, is, is budget for a, you know, a fifty thousand dollar a year guy instead of a ninety thousand dollar a year guy, and that does tie your hands a little bit, but that may be the best we can do, and that's an option we could consider.
But if they interviewed somebody who they wanted to bring in, that would come in at sixty-five, they could come back and say, well, this is a great candidate, let's bring him in, if we'll need to pay X, so.
Yeah, that's an approach.
Probably prefer to take that approach, and just say, you can have any amount within the scale.
I mean, if we do, if we budget high, it's okay, but we gotta do something to just, I mean, I'd love to have the best people in the world. I mean, without Robert here, we're not the best. You know, without Mike here, we're not the best, without Matt here, we're not the best. We need us all here to be able to get the people we need, and all I'm saying is, is let's go look.
Well, my, my confusion here is, is I just, all I thought we were doing was separating Austin out of office space.
Right.
I didn't understand that we, that his, he's just strictly being EMS, and we're paying a high wage for EMS, and now we need a whole nother thing, why would we do that? I don't think, I don't think there's enough.
Well, what we're talking about is replacing somebody that was part-time in the sheriff's department with somebody that's now full-time sheriff department, which is an increase in, in time for, for the department. That may not be a bad thing, but.
Well, my question is, is, okay, the sheriff's department, from what I've been told, um, they don't wanna have emergency management in their office. Is that true?
No, not true at all.
Okay. So if, if it isn't true, then why are we not just keeping him in the sheriff's department?
That's what I thought. That's what I understood we were doing. I just thought we were moving his office.
But if, and that's something I don't know. I thought we were completely moving at a completely different approach to-
I knew we were paying it out of a different account so we could get grants.
Right.
I knew that.
Okay, but it's still under the sheriff's department.
But it's still, but I didn't think he wasn't gonna be able to use it.
So doesn't that question just come down to whether or not Austin is continuing to perform deputy services for the sheriff's department?
Correct. That's right.
And that's something the sheriff has to determine whether or not it's gonna happen.
So, sounds to me like there's enough questions. We maybe oughta have a visit, not just at that next meeting, but maybe we need to have another budget session to talk just about these items.
I can agree.
Any concerns? And if so, is there a date that works for that? Want to add more to your calendars that are already?
Oh, man. I can on next Tuesday if you need it. I can do it Monday or Tuesday. Thursdays are hard unless it's later.
So next, next Tuesday is election day, the 8th, um, which will be hard for our clerk to be involved in that. The 9th, you've got stuff on Wednesday, starting at 7?
I, I actually leave on my cruise.
Oh, do you?
On about Monday?
Oh, on Saturday. Okay.
Oh, so we'd have to do it this week hopefully.
I mean, I can try and.
I would like you there.
Come in on Zoom or cell or. Now that would be hard.
About Monday, the 21st?
I can do that.
You're back by then?
Mm-hmm.
Robert?
What time is that date?
Should work. What time's good for you?
I, I mean, 4:00 is fine.
4:00, 5:00?
4:00, 5:00, whatever.
I can't do it at 4:00. We have a cog meeting.
Oh, 5:00? Is that late enough to be done? 5:00 on the 21st, we'll have a budget session? Okay.
Is this instead of meeting on 22nd?
No.
We'll still start our work session on the 22nd, but I think on the 21st we can get it, we can hammer out any questions we might have.
The extension request is pretty straightforward. I didn't ultimately make those changes. It's adding in the 6% COLA they only, if they present.
4, I think, is what they did. That seems reasonable to me. I don't have any concerns with that. Do you, anybody else have concerns with that?
Now, what was that?
The extension office. So they, they presented us a budget which, which is done from Utah State and we just basically agreed to it, but they had only put a 4% COLA in and we had done 6%. So the update would be to-
Well, but they also come in mid-year in July and tell us something that they're gonna do again and raise the budget again because theirs is on a fiscal year.
Their is a fiscal year, yes.
So I mean, first half of the year, we can do a 4%, the second half, we may have to do 6%. I don't know. So. I'm fine with whatever on that.
You wanna leave it as is and then when they present, you have to stall on it?
Well, it should be on the same, yeah, I think it should be on the same cycle. It's you, on a, on their annual, whatever, their, whatever calendar they go by.
Right. Okay. So, does that mean we leave it at the, at the 4% that was budgeted and then when they come and ask for more, we do that or is that what that suggestion?
I would think they're gonna come before us in July.
If they come before us?
So I'd say just give it the 6%.
Unless they, unless they aren't gonna, unless they say they won't ask for anything in July, I don't know how you can get that, right?
Yeah, because Utah State's not gonna have that until next May.
They won't determine their COLA. Yeah, you're right.
So we won't know that. So we can budget in there 6% and then decide from there, if it's an excess, it's an excess. Then we can put it into somebody else's budget later.
Okay. So if the suggestion is to budget at the 6%, she needs to add these amounts, correct?
Yes.
And I would say do it.
And then the increase that we're actually going to give us, the 4% is what you're suggesting. And then if they come and ask again in July, then that increase may be.
That's right.
So add it, but they'll stay for 4%.
That's what I'm hearing.
Okay.
That.
That's what I.
You're, okay. Okay. Okay, and then let's, let's end with that. We'll do that budget session on the 21st.
Okay.
Gotta give us about three minutes here to do anything we need to before meeting starts.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jared, go on and say.
Yeah, he's on a trip in California.
Oh, that's right. I mean, if it's a full-time, if we wanna keep that as a place for him to have an office, I don't see a problem with the EPM's office. It's a lot. It's, if that's what we're gonna do, is the direction of the sheriff's department, keeping him in the sheriff's department. If they want him up there, then let him have it up there. If not, keep him here. I don't care.
Sounds like a more in-depth conversation needs to be had.
That's right.
And I think a lot did, just go away. Okay, I think we're ready. All right, welcome to the Morgan County Commission meeting, November 1st, 2022. Commissioner Anderson has been excused from the meeting and is on vacation. The rest of the commissioners are present. We will begin with an invocation and pledge of allegiance and I'll go ahead and offer that. Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful to gather here this evening. We're grateful for the beautiful community in which we live. We're grateful for the members of this community. We're grateful for, um, the freedoms that we have, the ability to vote. We ask you to please bless us as we discuss the needs of our community. We will be able to make wise decisions. Please bless, um, those members of our community that are in need. And these things we pray for humbly in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will begin with the approval, um, of the October 18th, 2022 meeting minutes. Review and approval of those minutes. Are there any adjustments to the minutes that need to be made that have not already been given to Julie?
I didn't have any.
I didn't have any either. Nice work, Julie.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes for October 18th, 2022 as presented.
I'll second it.
You have a motion and a second to approve the minutes for October 18th, 2022. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Move to review and approval of the annual fraud risk assessment. This is an assessment that's the state auditor's office asks the county to do each year. Um, it's a scored assessment and then based on the score determines where Morgan County falls in our fraud risk. The overall total points available is 395. Morgan County has scored 350, which puts us in the low risk category. So according to this, we are at low risk of fraud, which is great. Appreciate Leslie for, for going through and putting this together. Um, and with that, I'll look for a motion to approve the fraud risk assessment so we can get it signed and back to the state auditor's office.
So moved. Second?
Motion and a second to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Declarations of conflict of interest with any members of the commission on any item on the agenda? Okay, seeing none. We will move to our public comment period. This is an opportunity for the public to address the commission. Uh, we'd ask that you please state your name, um, and, uh, please keep your comments to about three minimum, three minutes maximum. Okay, seeing no public comment. We will move to our action items. Oh, sorry, go ahead. You almost missed your shot.
Hi, my name is Kathy Hawes. I am from Mountain Green and I wanted to address you this evening regarding a question for the Frontier Estates final approval. Um, I've had many discussions about the definition of the will serve and approval, particularly from the sewer district. Um, they were going to have Zane Gray, a member of the sewer district, come tonight. I don't know if he is here yet. He might be coming later for the discussion part, but according to their will serve, it was conditional and they had not been submitted or approved a plan for the sewer. And according to the will serve definitions in county code 821, it says that in addition to the letter from the utility company which guarantees da, 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 it says, um, and a plan describing how the applicable utilities will be extended to the development. And according to the manager of the sewer district and a couple of the board members, they have not seen any of those plans. And so somebody suggested that, well, they could get final approval and then we would submit plans to the sewer district and then if the sewer district wasn't okay with it, then it would be stopped. My question is, isn't that putting the horse and cart in the wrong position? I thought that the purpose of will serve letters was to have everything in order before final approval. And so there's a number of things that have been questioned on this project, but the former manager signed a will serve that is differently worded than the one that was issued yesterday, but it is definitely conditional. And according to that code, there were no plans submitted to the sewer district. So if you could maybe address that in addition to other things I have raised, um, other concerns we have raised as far as if they have a secondary access, a temporary easement that they would be required to build a road that would be sufficient for emergency vehicles and that is also addressed in our county code. So if you could answer those questions and I hope Zane would be able to be here to further answer those since I'm just a citizen and not a member of the board, but I have spoken with both of them and he was gonna represent the sewer district because the will serve is conditional and according to our code, I think it doesn't have the plan in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any additional public comment? All right, we will move on to our action items. We'll start with action item number one. Um, Garrett Smith and Ty Bailey, this is, um, an amendment to our inter-local agreement between Morgan City Redevelopment Agency and Morgan County.
Ty, do you mind coming up to present this? I think Ty will do a better job presenting this. It is an amendment. There's only two paragraphs that are being changed. Um, I understand paragraph eight and could probably explain that pretty well, but I think Ty can handle the percentages a little better than me in paragraph seven.
Okay, I don't, um, it's right in front of me, but I did, um, come earlier in the year and, and, uh, present the concept to the, the council before we went and drafted the agreement. The RDA approved it, or the city approved it, um, the school district approved it and then the counties is still just pending on this agreement. But basically it just changes the RDA formula from the 4060 that we had before, um, to 2575. So the county will retain 25% of the property taxes within the RDA boundary and, um, give 75% to the RDA to use to, towards projects. Um, that change in that formula would reduce the amount that the county receives, that estimate, um, I think it was about 8,000 in that, but because the young dealership, um, is now over, the CRA is now over, you'll be receiving that revenue that you didn't receive before. And so your net would be, you'd be up, um, $2,000. The intent of redoing the, um, formula is, was a question of if we wanna do any more RDA incentives or not. The current RDA formula is adequate, but it's all tied up in the hotel incentive. So this new formula will generate enough, um, to do one additional project per year. Um, and that was the goal. You know, my first reason I came was to see if there was still interest in just letting the hotel, um, do its thing or if we, if we'd like to continue building that momentum that we have on, on, in, within the RDA. So hopefully that kinda spells. That's where we're at. That's what the paragraph you referred to, right?
Yeah.
Is the 2575.
That's right.
The previous formula also had, it was a 6040, but it had, um.
An additional.
An additional 75-25 on just the incremental value, so this is a cleaner formula. It'll be a little, a lot easier to understand when tax revenues come in.
And the base year's 2018, right? So it's the increment on top of 2018?
Yep, and so that's why this is an amendment. So when we renewed the RDA in 2019, this keeps, all of those are exactly the same. And when we renewed it, it was with the intent that we'd be able to come back and renegotiate the terms. If, if we don't have projects and the RDA begins to accumulate a fund balance, I would come back and renegotiate the rate back. The idea isn't to stockpile money, it's actually to do projects, and right now we have more demand, so we'd like to keep going in that, that direction. If you need a reminder of what the other projects were, I'd be willing to tell you what we've done in the RDA so far.
Is the Valus Hotel part of that RDA or not?
Yeah, so when we renewed in 2019, we did a minimum or maintenance level formula. That's what we had, and when we did that, it was without the hotel. And I kind of pitched the idea, let's just keep this intact at this minimum level of funding, but if we do get something large like a hotel, then we would come back and redo the formula. So the hotel's incentive is about $128,000 a year.
So the Valus Hotel...
Oh, the Valus is, yeah, sorry.
Okay, so if that one is in, if that one is part of the RDA right now, seems to me like they're just dragging their feet. Is that, is there anything within this RDA that you do to help, you know, to improve the value over a quicker time versus an extended 20-year time, which is what I'm seeing happening with the couple?
Well, so the Valus actually has their building permit now. They're getting a new roof this week. A lot of, a lot of the delay on the Valus was permitting more than anything.
Wouldn't you make it go faster?
Well...
But to your question, I think the question is, what incentivizes perhaps a business owner to get in now and not wait, right? Is that the question?
That's correct. That's the question.
And I think the simple answer to that is that this RDA expires after a 10-year period, so in 2029. So if they can get in now, they're getting that tax increment for 10 years, or nine years, or whatever it is, left, versus if they get in in five years and they've only got four years left, or whatever that might be.
Yeah, and we only have the ability to do one project per year. We've done four projects and the hotel out of what we had in the, in the funds, so.
Yeah, this isn't a huge-dollar RDA compared to some projects, for sure.
And really, the incentive is to offset the risk. So some of those old buildings have, most of the $40,000's gone towards code improvements or things that they found when they did demo, more so than, than anything, but it's helped. It's helped. And then the amount of investment has far exceeded my expectations as well, the amount of money that's gone into capital improvements, which ups the property tax value forever. So it's...
I definitely think that there's no question that we've seen some major improvements on Commercial Street in the last few years in terms of investment and businesses locating there, and that's, some of that's a direct result of this, so I think that's wonderful.
Yeah, absolutely it is.
Any, any questions for Ty or Garrett regarding this amendment?
So I may be just a little confused by the language. So it says, "The agency on an annual basis is going to remit to the county." So you collect, taxes are collected, it's all paid to the agency, and you're going to remit to us 25% of the increment attributable to the marginal taxable value between base year taxable value and 2018 taxable value. Do we get everything over the 2018 to 2022 taxable value?
The 25% of, you know, year-over-year, so.
But wouldn't it have been 40%?
But right now, you get...
Yeah, but now 40 every 25.
What's happening to the increment between, the difference between the 2018 and the 2022 taxable value increment?
I was thinking that 2018 was the base year, but it says base year and 2018. Is that your question?
Yeah, it says the value between the base year taxable value and the 2018 taxable value.
Oh, yeah, so the 2018, that just, when we renewed, that started the new base value. So that's what the, we're just talking about the portion above that.
So wouldn't it be more accurate to say, if that's the 2018 base year taxable, is now the base year?
It's the base year.
You want the increment between 2018 and the given tax year?
Yep.
That's just not what this agreement says. I get it, that makes more sense to me, but this, this language doesn't say that. Then it says, "The agents be authorized to retain all the remaining balance." Okay, because you just gave us our percentage. Continue to retain 75% of all tax increment attributable to the growth experienced at the project area between the base year and the final year, i.e. tax year 2018, of collection under the original project area plan and budget, and that for any new value created after 20 December 31st, 2018.
Yeah, so it's just saying from 2018 to whatever that, the current year value is. When you just read that part, it said, it said what I thought you...
I can give mine.
Collection, I think the issue is here. And that for any new value...
...attributable to the marginal taxable value between base year taxable value and the 2018 taxable value. The base year is 2018, so I think...
So you can just remove that one if you want.
So it should say the base year taxable value, 2018, maybe in parentheses, which is the base and the current.
Taxable.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be acceptable, that change. Sorry, I wasn't reading the...
No, I understand it, just, I guess, as I read through it, I'm like, I can't tell what you're taking and giving me back.
And I think it was based off the verbiage of the original agreement that we currently have in place, so that language is transferred over.
And you're okay with that language that we just discussed? If we make that update?
Yeah, it says that it reflects what you want it to understand, what it says. The way it functions is exactly the same, so.
Okay, perfect. So my thought is perhaps we can approve or...
With changes.
With those changes, and then I'll just, as soon as Ty gets that, we can get it updated, and then I'll sign it.
Yeah, you just send us the updated agreement, so we're just trying to get the agreement in place now before the end of the year taxes start to come in, so we can allocate it out. I have it in place, too.
Makes sense. Okay, any other questions for Ty? All right, let's have a...
Just want to clarify, under paragraph seven, that first paragraph under, under that section, the last part says taxable value between the base year taxable value and the current year taxable value. Is that...
Yep.
The change?
I think that's exactly what we... I think it's very clear what the base year is, so I don't know that we need to list 2018 in there. It listed in multiple other locations in the agreement.
Okay.
And if you have any way to give extra credit to Robert McConnell for catching that, I would include that.
We give him kudos every meeting.
Give him an extra gold star.
Oh, you get or you don't get.
Slap upside the head.
Do we have, do we have an editable version of this, Garrett?
We do not. We just have the, the hard copy that...
Ty, I assume you have an editable version of it?
Yeah, yeah, we can send it.
And you'd probably have to reapprove it with the...
Well, he's got approval to, because we have a document here from the city saying that he's been given authority to sign it on behalf of the city.
Yeah.
So I'm guessing he just...
There's no subs, yeah, but I...
Because we have a copy where you've signed...
I mean, it's Woods and Gary Crane, and so if we... We can just...
Change it, they can just re-sign it.
Yeah, so we didn't, we didn't make any changes to the content.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the First Amendment to the inter-local cooperation agreement between Morgan City Redevelopment Agency and Morgan County, subject to the changes discussed this evening.
I'll second it.
A motion and a second to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Appreciate you coming over. We now have kind of a marathon of planning items, so we're going to start with the CW Land request on the Rome Retail and Office subdivision, and then work on another CW Land request, followed by Whittier Estates, followed by Los Hach Peaks, and followed by Frontier Estates. So Josh, we'll turn it over to you and start with the CW Land Company request for Rome Retail.
Thank you. Rome Retail and Office Subdivision Concept Plan is a request by CW Land. They are, and this is file number 22.037, they are requesting approval of a development on 6.36 acres of land within the town center zoning area as part of the Rome development. This concept plan is for five commercial lots, which would include what appear to be a bank, maybe a restaurant, retail, and some offices. We have reviewed the proposal. We are recommending approval for the concept plan to move forward. One of the conditions is that they fix the access issues to the satisfaction of the engineer, the county engineer, as well as the plan, the plan director, and that they complete site plan review, which would include landscape plan, lighting plan, parking calculations, and just make sure that they meet all the minimum requirements of the code. They can do that concurrently with their preliminary, preliminary final plat, and so the site plan would come back to you at that point. There were no other additional comments or from the engineer, surveyor, or anyone else.
Questions for staff? Is there an applicant representative here?
I believe so.
What are the, the scans are not coming through where if I blow them up, the language is very clear. So I think it's on the west side. There's these orange areas.
Put your page in that. Is that this page? This the one you're talking about?
No, there's this, like a, a site plan, and it's got these orange things.
Those are underground retention, if I remember correctly.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Oh, yeah, they're in the parking lot areas.
Yeah.
Yeah. Any other questions for staff? And are there any questions for the applicant?
What are the parking requirements for the office building?
Parking requirements for office? I can look that up really quick.
So just out of interest, is there, do you have any interest in...
That's, that's great.
Can you tell us anything?
You want me to stand up there?
Sure, yeah.
Go ahead. Yeah, Chase Prebrand representing CW Land. Yeah, so we're, we're under contract with a prominent local credit union on Lot 5, and we're working with, with our brokerage, a broker that's representing us to find additional users, and it's, you know, it's, it's not the Los Hach front, it's the Los Hach back, and so it's a unique, you know, user, but it is, there's a lot of potential there with the future freeway exit and access to Snow Basin and Trappers Loop. So we, we are working with a broker who's, who's helping find users for us in this market. You know, we're in a little slower market conditions right now, and so it's, you know, there's, there's still a demand, it's just slower, and it's trying to find the right user.
So is Lot 5 the one that's on the...
The southwest corner.
Southwest corner?
Correct.
Okay. So they have multiple drive-through lanes?
Yeah, they, they would need a drive-through lane, obviously, with being a credit union to have, have that, so.
Oh, that's exciting. That's great.
And so all these others are, I mean, you're planning on a restaurant or something in there? Have they got anybody in mind yet? What kind or...
We still, we're in talks with a bunch of people. Again, we're not solidified, nothing's in stone with other groups, but there are, I mean, potential office users, potential, you know, retail users, restaurants of the nature, the people that are interested in this kind of submarket. It, it's a little hard just being, you know, I think they'd be some of the first ones in this area, and so there's some hesitancy on, on some users to, to jump right in in this market conditions with, with the slower market we're in, but no doubt this is going to be a great commercial site for whoever ends up here, and as soon as we have those users lined up, we'll come back and let you know who they are.
Yeah, because we have a special palate, we kind of taste, we... So the plaza you've kind of created through the center of the two office buildings and then the two pads to the, does that integrate well with the trail system in the residential area that's to the north?
As far as I know, and I, I think the sidewalk, correct me if I'm wrong, Josh, I, I don't know if there's any trail on, on this particular parcel. To my knowledge, there's not. It's, it's just the commercial standard sidewalk.
Well, I'm not asking if there's a trail on this particular parcel, but there, there were either pedestrian connections that run through that residential subdivision to the north. Seems like there's a trail that's on the far north end, and it looks like it would make sense. It looks like it's coming down a street, and that people would then be able to come over into the plaza and then ultimately...
Yeah, yeah, I mean, there, there would definitely be pedestrian access from, you know, the residence to the north, you know, to be able to, you know, if they had employment here, or if they wanted to, you know, spend their time and leisure time there, they would have that opportunity to walk down.
And are these office buildings two-story, single-story?
Yeah, it, it really depends on the user. It's hard to say right now, but, I mean, there could be users that want two stories.
So it's build-to-sue?
It's build-to-sue, yeah. There's, there's so many unknowns, it's, it's going to be based on the user at this point, so.
Okay, any other questions for the applicant?
I just hope it's a beautiful area after it's done. And one that's walkable, because that was the whole concept of a town center, was to have a walkable area.
Yeah, someplace you can live and work and...
Because I sure don't want to see somewhere where we're constantly trying to get through a traffic mess. So anything you can do to help out that.
It looks nice.
Yeah, I'm excited to see some potential commercial development in the area. It's been a long time coming, so.
Very much.
Okay, that will look for a motion.
Just, well, I'm just interested in the parking requirement that we impose there.
Parking requirements for office is one space for 200 square feet of usable space, so they could deduct kitchen, break room, storage closets, hallways.
Essentially, five per thousand of usable. One per 200, okay.
Right, one for 200, but then restaurants have a different, and then retail has a different, and then shopping centers as a whole has a difference, so it's, you know, how we want to look at it.
Okay.
Shopping center is one per 150 square feet usable. Retail is one per 100, and restaurant is one per 75.
Thank you.
Okay, that it for staff?
Yep.
All right, we'll look for a motion on item number one. Sorry, number two.
I'll move to approve the Rome Retail and Office Subdivision Concept Plan, application number 22.037, for a five-lot subdivision of land located at approximately 4951. For a five-lot subdivision of land located at approximately forty-nine fifty west Old Highway Road in unincorporated Morgan County, based on the findings. And with the conditions listed in the staff report dated November first, twenty-twenty-two.
I'll second it.
A motion and a second to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Move to item number three. Another CW Land request. This is approval of the Warner West subdivision concept plan, a proposed subdivision of fifty-three half-acre and larger lots.
Thank you.
These are residential lots, correct?
Yeah. This is, uh, file number twenty-two point zero four seven, which is the Warner West, uh, concept plan for subdivision approval. Uh, the current zoning is R one twenty on property that's located on Trapper's Loop on the west side of the road. The total acreage is approximately thirty-four acre, almost thirty-five acres in size. Uh, we have reviewed the concept plan based on the requirements of the code. There were a few comments from engineering that they will have to address during preliminary plat approval. Uh, specifically regarding street design, uh, secondary access, but there's also, um, They are gonna have to start meeting with UDOT to obtain access approval onto Trapper's Loop, since that's a state code. Um, that, that could, I don't wanna speak for UDOT as they make their decisions, um, but That'll be a hinge point whether the, the subdivision can move forward or not. But at this time, um, we believe the concept plan met the minimum requirements of our code, and we're recommending approval to allow them to go forward to preliminary plat.
So where would the secondary access for this be?
Secondary access for this property, if this is completed along with Frontier Estate, would loop around into the subdivision to the north.
Into Trapper's Point?
So that stubs into what, what Frontier Estates would be, that, that road, conceptually, okay. And then their main entry is off of Trapper's Loop?
That's correct.
And then what's this stub out to the south?
I'm sorry?
You've got a road going out to the south, it's stubbed off. What's happening there?
Um, that, if I remember correctly, that is the-
Future development?
That is for future development. Uh, they're gonna have to address that as that exceeds a hundred and fifty feet in length, so In order for fire access, they'll probably have to put a cul-de-sac or temporary cul-de-sac down there.
So this asks a Frontier Estates question, but they're right next to each other and seeming to using the same secondary access, so The staff report on Frontier Estates says that there was an easement granted, but the way I read the staff report, It suggested that that easement was on the northern property line of this property.
That's correct.
And so they're showing lots On this concept plan That go right up to the Existing Trapper's Loop lots.
Yep.
So they're not showing that easement.
The easement's a temporary easement? Which, uh, would go away at the time this subdivision develops.
But that's pre, that's They need to have that. I don't know.
That's, that's true. If Frontier Estates develops before Warner West, then Frontier Estates will be required to improve the twenty-foot access easement to fire department standards. And then when Warner West develops, then that temporary easement would go away.
Okay, alright.
I just wonder if they both require UDOT access, if it wouldn't make more sense to have them at a single location? Cause you, you, in the Warner, or the Frontier Estates access, Temporary though it may be, If it needs to be constructed as part of the subdivision, is going to require access onto that highway.
You could make that as a stipulation of approval on Frontier Estates, that they re-address the easement and make it align with the Warner West proposed street location.
I would like to have a second, a second access to the whole development. Somewhere in this. Because, I mean, we're, we're running into the same problem we have with Trapper's Point. They've got one entrance in. And they don't wanna have anything from Frontier Estates on it, or, yeah, Frontier Estates going back through their, their property And through their subdivision, which, you know, Hey, it doesn't give them the right to do that anyway, but, I mean, I know we've had problems in the past with, and, another egress. And there's not a single one with this.
Well, Frontier Estates is here, then I, I see how there's secondary access through the main road and this cul-de-sac. The, the other one It appears long.
Right. Especially when there's n, I don't know how many feet that is To that cul-de-sac that you've got in there.
Well, the cul-de-sac on, uh, the Warner West needs to be redesigned anyway. It, it doesn't meet county standards, so that's one of our conditions.
And even the top one, the one on the north side, you've got a circle there? On exhibit E?
Uh, the one on the top appeared to meet standards. It's the, it's the southern cul-de-sac that's Kinda walking.
Is there any parks in there, trails, walking areas, anything?
Uh, that would be a question for the applicant. Uh, the concept plan didn't show that.
And this, this area to the east, towards Trapper's Point, what is that considered there? Or there's no lots or anything?
Looks like it's too steep to build.
No, it's not steep at all.
Slow retention.
On the east side?
Oh, the west side.
West side I can understand. The east side, it's like this.
Yeah, the east side, that's probably steep slopes, undevelopable.
Undevelopable?
Yeah, both sides have slopes.
Boy, I wish I had a picture today.
Well, it does drop down in there.
It drops down.
Drops down, but it's not that far.
That's a hill.
Okay, so that's basically gonna be left as open space?
That's what's shown on the concept plan.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, this is interesting because We've got two potential subdivisions that, if done together, would solve each other's problems.
Yep.
However, separately, they don't.
They don't. And then the third one that comes in just below it to the south would be another That would solve a lot more of the problems.
My understanding with the property to the south is they'd have to rezone it first, so you would see that first.
So the conditions that you've put here with respect to the things we've been discussing is the application will need to include secondary access, will need to be constructed concurrently with the subdivision. And then the street design of subdivision submittal will conform to the county's roadway design, which you're presently saying it does not by virtue of the cul-de-sac.
That's correct. And then Chief Brendel's here as well.
Okay, come on up. Oh, sorry, Mr. Chair.
Old habits die hard. So, um, yeah. But Commissioner McConnell's correct, it's, they're both, um, They can both be approved fine by the fire district if they both build. Uh, what I had to put in there for caveats were that if one builds and one doesn't, They're gonna have to put in the fire apparatus access road. Um, we'll speak more about, um, Frontier Estates in a minute, but particularly about, um, Warner West. They'll have to build a fire apparatus access road that has, uh, remoteness, which means it has to be, it can't be right up next to the other one. It has, it more than likely would go into Trapper's Point is what I'm guessing. But, we can't really approve it without a secondary access for the fire apparatus, and it has to be Built to IFC specification, seventy-five thousand pounds and all weather, so. So, that's, but that's Warner West, so.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. Any questions?
I, I guess that being said, is there, is there a concept of where that might be, or is the assumption that, That the other subdivision takes care of that secondary access? Cause I don't see anything on the, on the drawings of a, a fire access.
The assumption I, I would imagine is that during preliminary plat design, they can work that out.
In this concept plan, I know we're trying to build a trails plan within the state and within our county, in particular, our county. Can any of that frontage area along with Trapper's Loop be used or be available for usage to put in a trail?
Uh, you can request that. You can request that of the applicant, but I don't know of anything in our code that would require us to include that as part of a concept plan or preliminary plat.
Okay.
Um, we don't have a trails master plan as far as I-
Not yet.
When we get a trails master plan and it's adopted by the county commission, um, then we might have some teeth that we could use.
Okay. I'm just curious if they're amenable to doing something like that or talking about it. I know they're back there in the back, so, um, I mean, it's not saying we're going to, and we're not exactly sure, but I know there's just a lot of discussion right now in the state To put in trails in every aspect of everything that we do. And it's not just me now, it's the governor and on down. And, uh, Trapper's Loop has been one that we've had in discussion As to how we can make it so that we don't have as much safety problems. And we're not exactly sure where it's gonna go. I'm just hoping that the property owners that are developing ground will at least allow us to at least consider something, and that's all. As a concept.
From your perspective, if, if a trail system were to be built there, would that be located on UDOT right of way? Or are you suggesting it'd be part of the private subdivisions?
Don't know yet.
Okay.
That's just a future look at possibly something. It would be a benefit for everybody involved. We're not sure if it's gonna go on this side or on this side. Uh, right now, we're trying to get it on this side. And so, on the east side of Trapper's Loop, uh, I mean, we're hoping what we could possibly do is to have the trails, Trail be over the original Trapper's Loop road. But, that's just thoughts. That's actually getting closer and closer, so, we're working on it. So I'm not saying it's gonna be out on your part of the property, you know, wherever it might be. It may be on one side or the other, but we're just hoping we can have the discussions, cause I don't want somebody, I'm not gonna prove this, if, if all of a sudden you say, no, cut off, we're putting a fence up, you know, everything's, yeah, I mean, there's fence there now, but it could be on UDOT property, it could be not. And that's what I, we're just trying to see what landowners are gonna be amenable to talking.
Josh, the, the criteria for concept, um, you have that grid that has all the different things, and we write whether it applies or doesn't. Section or number, letter H, says, uh, public, public and private easements located on the property. But it sounds like we've identified a couple of potential easements that are not located on the, on the concept plan at this point. One being the easement, the potentially temporary easement for Frontier Estates that we've been told exists there. And then the other would be a potential easement, although maybe temporary, That would provide secondary fire access for this particular project, should Frontier Estates not come to fruition.
Right.
It seems to me like both of those probably ought to be shown on this concept, but what's your thoughts on that?
Uh, the temporary easement would go away as soon as this starts to develop, or develops. So I'm not sure that would need to be shown, um, since it's gonna go away, and you would want that on the plat when it's recorded, cause it would no longer be there. Uh, the other easement, I, I guess I'm not sure which easement that is that you're referring to.
So I'm just saying if, let's say Frontier Estates does not move forward, if this project does, Um, they need a, an easement of some sort to show, or an access, maybe it's not an easement, maybe that's not the correct term for it, but an access, a secondary access. And I don't see that on here. And although the other easement may be temporary, I still think it needs to be shown on here, because otherwise, how do we enforce that? Seems to me that, I mean, ideally, both projects, if they're gonna move forward, move together, move forward together, so that we don't have to worry about this, but In case one does not, you know, either one does not, Both need to be protected if there are easements in fact in place. And I don't see those easements on the, the project, so I guess what I'm getting at is I don't feel like the concept plan meets the requirement if, if There's not an easement showing that, and there's not a secondary access currently being shown on the-
Okay, you could add a stipulation for preliminary plat submittal that they show those easements.
And, and maybe that's something we ought to do, I don't know, that's just a thought I had.
Yeah, it's a good thought.
Well, and the, if the, the temporary easement won't be able to be vacated Until the new road is completed, providing A secondary means of ingress and egress, so.
So it probably ought to be recorded, then initially.
I think, I think it's been recorded, I, I haven't seen it, but the staff report for Frontier Estates indicates it's been recorded.
Yeah.
So if that's been recorded and it's temporary, it, it could be vacated upon completion of the road through this subdivision. So, I would show it on the plat, and you could put a note that it will be vacated upon completion of the primary road. Um, and acceptance, you know, by the county of that road as a public road, and then That way, it doesn't chill the buyers. They say, oh, yeah, when the roads are completed here, that goes away. But, I think you're right, it should be shown on the plat.
Okay.
Which would also mean that Frontier, well, I know that's to the later point, but Frontier Estates can't begin unless this other one's in.
Well, if they have this easement, that, that's their secondary access, but that easement has to remain in place until the other road is completed. Is what we're saying.
But will it meet, will it be able to meet what is required as a secondary egress When they're not into the development stage yet, is my question. I don't know.
The Frontier Estates secondary access, well, that, that's, that's one of the issues that needs to be discussed tonight as part of that application. That, It, it's, it's fine to have the easement, but the road has to, the secondary access has to be
Be usable.
Completed as part of their subdivision improvement process pursuant to the conditions that Chief Brendel spoke about.
Okay. We got a little bit of a chicken and the egg situation here, I'm trying to figure out. So not trying to, to talk both subdivisions at the same time, but they are very interrelated, and To some degree, I'm pleased to see that, that both are being addressed at a similar time, because we have a lot of subdivisions in the county, frankly, that Don't have connectivity, because they were built at very different times. You know, in fact, CW Land doesn't connect to Rollins Ranch. And in my mind, it should, but they were built at completely different times, and that connectivity was never established the way that I think it should have been. And for a well-planned community, that connectivity ought to occur, so. For what it's worth, I think it's good that we are talking about both at the same time to some degree. Okay, any other questions or comments for staff regarding this decision? And, and Josh, just, You'll hear me do this a lot, but for the sake of, of the public, um, and, and to kinda help the public understand the process that we're, that we go through here on a, on a subdivision, Can you just briefly, very briefly, describe the phases of the process? So right now, we're talking concept. Concept is essentially saying, is this even feasible in this area? After concept, we move to preliminary, where we're getting a little more in the weeds, and then final, where we're, we're way in the weeds, right?
Right.
You wanna just maybe briefly describe that?
Sure. Uh, in our code, concept plan has a list of items that need to be addressed. Those items are, uh, minimal. They, uh, they basically lay out what a subdivision could look like. Proposed lots, number of lots, location of streets, uh, not really looking at design at this stage. We look at feasibility, length of the streets, are the, can the streets actually meet minimum code standards? code standards, things like that. Then once that's approved, they can go into preliminary plat, which looks into more detail where they submit their will serve letters. The plans are probably at that stage 65%. They're, they're not completely done. And once preliminary plat's approved, including the approval of the will serve letters and everything else associated with that document, they're given approval to go with final plat. And when they submit their final plat documents, they're, we're looking more at the minutia, making sure that it meets minimum recorder standards. The surveyor reviews it, final times, the fire reviews it again, engineering reviews it again, and we make sure that their plans meet all the minimum code standards and can move on towards submitting construction documents and actually putting in the improvements. At that point, the construction documents would be sent to the water utility and the sewer utility, and then they would have to approve those plans as well going forward in order to construct and connect to those utilities, not necessarily before final plat approval though.
Thank you. And the reason I kind of ask that is because I know sometimes for myself, before I spent time on the planning commission and now on the county commission, I wondered, well, why aren't they talking about sewer and water at this point, right? We're talking about 53 more homes, well, what about the sewer and water for them? Does there, is there enough water, those kinds of things? And the fact of the matter is, that's not part of the discussion for concept, but it is for preliminary. The next stage, that's when we're going to get into nitty gritty. Is there really enough water for 53 homes or is there only enough for 47 or whatever? I'm throwing out a number, that's not an actual thing, but.
I think it's just important to understand that there's, there's phases to the process. It's a fairly lengthy process and we look at different items throughout the process and determine those at certain stages. So that's why we're not going to ask the question tonight for this particular application regarding sewer and water, but you'll hear us talk about that for Frontier Estates because they're at a different stage. So, okay. With that.
I have one more.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, but looking at the property, you, where you've got that concept to be stubbed into the south, which is a completely different property where it's 10 acres and I'm, they've got a home there, are they really going to, I mean, is there a reason why it's being stubbed there versus coming out onto the highway?
I would imagine they're anticipating future development for the Warner family, who I believe owns more land in the south. The location of a home doesn't necessarily mean that they can't rezone it and then subdivide that into smaller lots and fit their existing home onto.
So the Woody family is part of your family? I've asked them. Oh, okay. All right. All right, sounds good then. I just wasn't sure, I thought, why would you go and?
Well, I think that's back to my point about connectivity. I actually think it's really good that we're looking at stub roads into potential future development and not creating islands, which we have created in some situations and that's foolish. That's, that's one of the reasons why we have this whole discussion about access and secondary access because we've created or allowed some islands to be created, so to speak.
Okay, I'm fine.
Okay. That will look for a motion on item number three.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the Warner West subdivision concept plan, application number 22.047 for a 53 lot subdivision of land located at approximately 6651 Trapper's Loop Road in unincorporated Morgan County, based on the findings and what the conditions listed in the staff report dated November 1, 2022, adding an additional condition that the secondary access easements for Frontier Estates and Warner West should be shown on the preliminary plat. Or I'll say shall be required to be shown on the preliminary plat.
A second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay. Motion passes. We will move to item number four. Josh, you're up again.
Thanks. This is for application number 22.034 for the Whittier Estates Phase 1 plat amendment, which is located in the Whittier Estates subdivision, east of Morgan Valley Drive off of Thurston. They are proposing to move land between several of the lots and Peterson Pipeline, a lot that, property that Peterson Pipeline owns. My understanding is this is because of an ongoing legal, I don't know if dispute is the right word, between the property owners and Peterson Pipeline. This amendment, which would move some land from the two lots into Peterson Pipeline's lot and then expanding their lots by a little bit as well, is part of that settlement agreement. One of the property owners was at the planning commission meeting who gave a pretty succinct description of why it was needed. I don't know if she's here, but.
Josh, I'm here. I'm with.
Oh, you might want to allow him to kind of give an explanation.
Yeah, that sounds great.
Hi.
Hello.
My name is Jared Santos. I live at one of the lots there, 3951 Thurston Drive. The plat amendment before you is an outcome between Peterson Pipeline and our two houses within the Whittier Estates subdivision. Essentially, kind of deals with the border of Peterson Pipeline and their land that they own by the pump house. Back in 2019, Peterson Pipeline informed the owners of those two lots that there was a 99-year lease that Peterson Pipeline had signed back in 1967. The owners of those lots didn't know about the lease. In my case, it wasn't on the title search, it wasn't on the neighborhood plot, it wasn't on any of the disclosures. I bought a house into the neighborhood as one of the first houses. The developer of the neighborhood had actually built my house as a spec house, and it was actually on part of the land of the 99-year lease that Peterson Pipeline kind of owned. Anyways, numerous rounds of negotiation and settlements with title companies and lawyers have been involved in order to get us to this agreement. Essentially, in exchange for Peterson Pipeline giving up their 99-year lease, the owners of those two lots are going to give 50-foot radius around the pump house so that Peterson Pipeline can get construction equipment in for well maintenance because that's what they kind of felt that they need. And we also signed some land use agreements saying that we wouldn't pollute the well or the groundwater around that. In my case, there's a little bit of excess land that Peterson Pipeline didn't need that in part of the negotiation, I'm kind of swapping, so I'm giving them some land and they're giving me a little bit of land. I think the other lot, they're just giving away the 50-foot radius and that's kind of the end of the story. Kind of questions you got?
That makes sense why the lot line is rounded.
Yeah, that's.
It's circular.
They wanted a 50-foot radius.
Okay.
I guess so they can get in machinery to work on the well or whatever.
Any questions?
No, I'm, I'm just, I don't, maybe you can answer this. I'm just a little confused by the plat amendment itself. And again, these images are not coming through with the greatest amount of clarity.
I'm a picture person. Look at this. Like, I printed it out and I can kind of walk it through you with you if you want.
Yeah.
I think that's the one we have, but it's just hard for us to see.
Yeah, I know. It's printed out on my computer. It printed out kind of bad as well. I don't want to leave you out, but you two are kind of in the middle, so.
Fine, I'm, I'm good with this one.
Essentially, this is kind of like now, and this is what the proposal is. So my house now, this really faint green area is actually the 99-year lease area, and you can see it's kind of over my house. That's, that's the problem. And so Peterson Pipeline wants kind of a 50-foot radius around it, so I will get this part. That's why their kind of thing ends up jogging back. And then Peterson Pipeline will end up kind of having this circular thing.
Okay, makes sense.
Yeah.
Totally makes sense.
Yeah.
It's not going to be very fun defense, but it'll.
If I can just add.
If I can just add one more point on Jared's asserting Alex's thing. The reason why it needed a plat amendment is because it tweaks lot boundaries and just slightly adjusts the outer boundary of the subdivision as well, so we had to bring it through a plat amendment process. What's most important for, I think, you guys' purposes is it doesn't, we're still not anywhere close to minimum lot sizes, we're well above that, we're not close to violating any setback requirement or anything like that. It still complies with all ordinances and rules and everything. It just takes what used to be a straight line and makes it kind of like that to make sure that there's adequate protection around the well, so. If you have any questions, I can give you a much longer explanation than you'd ever dream of, but I won't do that.
Awesome, thank you. Okay, with that, we'll look for a motion on item number four.
So protects Thanksgiving dinner?
I can do it.
Sorry, I moved.
I'll move to approve the Whittier Estates Phase 1 plat amendment, application number 22.034, located at 3800 West, 3900 North, and 3901 and in, and address 3901 and 3951 Thurston Drive, based on the findings and with the conditions listed in the staff report dated November 1, 2022.
A second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Okay, Josh, you're going to get your squats in from getting up and down from the chair.
Yep.
I'm looking forward to the day we hear this on Heather Meadows.
Okay. Item number four, Wasatch Peaks Ranch LLC, Phase 2A subdivision, preliminary.
So this is for application number 22.057 for Wasatch Peaks Ranch. They submitted for final plat approval for Phase 2A, which includes 25 lots, one parcel and three open space parcels or tracks. We have reviewed it. It is consistent with their submitted development agreement. The engineer, county engineer has no comments and the surveyor has no comments as well. We are recommending approval.
Any questions for staff on this particular section?
No, I listened to the, the planning commission meeting on it and I think you guys drilled them quite well, so I'm fine.
Looks like this is, this is connected to the currently approved subdivision.
Is this the third, I mean, they've already gone with 52, then 25, or is this part of the 25?
This, this 25 is part of the second phase. So you have the first phase, which they're coming through with an amendment to add some additional townhome units.
Okay.
I believe that'll be on the 15th.
Okay.
This is for the final plat for Phase 2, which they've already started construction on. Their development agreement allows them to start their improvements after preliminary plat approval.
I have a question on just a couple of things in their design. Oh, sorry, hold on.
While he's looking for that, Josh, we are going to change our meeting from the 15th to the 22nd, just for your information.
Perfect.
The 15th happens to be a week where Utah Association of County meetings are taking place in St. George and we've got some commissioners out of town, so.
Okay, thank you.
So there's just a couple of lots that I'm not understanding how the access will work. So you've got lot D-23 that doesn't appear to have any road frontage, it's up there by an open space E.
Looks like a double lot.
Yeah, yeah, so you're right, there's no frontage on that lot to a road, is there?
Yeah, so D-23 doesn't have any kind, is it in a future phase?
No, it's, I'm reading it as part of this plat. And then I'm not sure what that stuff is on D-30. So there's, there, it looks like there's a building envelope and then there's a dotted area. Oh, it's an open space easement.
Yeah.
But that creates the same concern. How do they get access over the open space easement down to the road? So D-30 has roadway frontage, a considerable amount of it, but where they've put the building envelope, you would have to cross the open space easement to get to it. So are they bringing in access over D-29?
My understanding through conversations with Wasatch Peaks Ranch representative is that those property owners are going to have to work with the state of Utah to build bridges over those open space areas because they're either water, like springs, or they're wetlands, and so the property owners themselves will have to bridge that gap.
So the same with D-32?
No, D-30.
32.
32.
That's a heck of a bridge for D-32.
Yeah, it's a big one. D-33 also. Oh, that one's all right. No, that one's fine, that one's okay.
Well, D-2, D-32 has a space to go up through that on that side.
It does, I can see that.
And then D-23, do you have any, do you know what they're doing there?
Uh, that I don't know. I, I missed that.
And they're not here?
I don't believe they are.
Well, this is preliminary.
This is final.
Oh, this is final. Why did I read preliminary? Oh. We advertised it as preliminary.
We did?
On the agenda. Agenda says preliminary.
Yeah, it does.
So we got a little problem there.
I would suggest continuing it till the 22nd and bring it back. And during that time, I will find out.
Address those.
I just think it'd be good to show if there, for example, if there's a shared access easement that's going over D-22 to D-23, I would show it on the plat.
All lots need frontage, though, according to our code. I'm not sure if their development agreement eliminates that, but I can look into that.
Okay. How big is that lot?
Big.
It's a large lot.
Yeah, they're massive lots.
Because in A-20.
Of course, I guess this isn't A-20. But large, large lots in A-20 aren't required to have frontage if you have an easement through another property.
Well, there, there may be a provision for this in their development, but we need to look at that. But Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we continue the Wasatch Peaks Ranch LLC Phase 2A subdivision final plat until our meeting on November 22nd.
A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, perfect. We can address those couple of items and make sure we advertise for final instead of preliminary will be good.
Thanks. I'll also make sure the applicant's here next, at the next.
Okay, wonderful. Josh, you can stay, stay standing if you want. Oh, you got to get a different folder. All right. Okay. Item number six, final plat approval for Frontier Estates subdivision of 10 single-family lots.
This is for file number 22.054, Frontier Estates final plat. The applicant is Kirk Smith. His property is located approximately at 6751 North Frontier Drive. The area is approximately 11.67 acres. They received preliminary plat approval last November. The approval letter was dated November 9th, so they're coming up on their expiration of 12 months. The engineer and the fire department and the surveyor have reviewed it. They have added conditions and comments that need to be addressed during, that would need to be addressed during the construction phase of, of the subdivision. Staff is recommending approval of the final plat with the conditions and stipulations that we've included, that all engineering, fire, and surveyor comments are addressed, that the county, that prior to recordation, the secondary access shall be constructed or shall be included as a line item in the assurance bond calculations and posted with the county at the time of recordation, that all outsourced consultant fees are paid, that all other local, state, and federal laws are adhered to.
So back to our earlier discussion, we talked about the current temporary easement for secondary access. I don't see that on this plat either, on the final plat here.
The final plat for the lots that were created shows. The final plat for the lots that were created show the north access easement that would connect to the Warner property. It does not show the easement on the Warner property, though, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, yeah, it shows a stub road out, which is the ideal thing, not, not the temporary access. But the temporary access is not listed on here.
It actually is on the north side.
It's just so hard to see.
Lot 10.
Yeah, it's on Lot 10. Would you prefer 11 by 17s in the future instead of 8 and 1/11 because that might make it more.
I think, I think our problem is we're scanning it instead of attaching a PDF. We'd probably, if we attached the PDF version, it'd be dynamic and we could zoom.
Well, what I'll start doing is creating a PowerPoint presentation with those items that we can put up on the.
That would be great.
That'll be great. Then maybe we can zoom in on it just to kind of see it. Cause yeah, typically if this was the, the PDF that had been submitted to you, we could zoom right in and see it, but because it's been scanned, that's part of our problem. We used to, we used to get those as a PDF, so maybe we just need to work that out. She can just merge it into it or something.
Is it the scan that's causing the problem, do you think?
Yeah. Okay. I can sort of see something here. Oh, yeah, now I see.
On the left-hand side of it.
20-foot temporary access. Yeah.
Oh, right there. That's the first line above it.
Yep, yep, right above Lot 10.
So I asked Josh to send some of the will serve letters, which I think were dated. So I think there was a discussion from the engineer about updated will serve letters.
Yep. Bart Smith brought in an updated will serve, water will serve letter yesterday. Because of meetings and such, I wasn't able to email it to you. I apologize. I also got an email from the Mountain Green Sewer Improvement District that included a will serve letter that granted them sewer service if they met certain conditions.
And did the conditions, the prior one included a condition with respect to the design of the system, but our will serve letter definition indicates that there should be an approved design as part of the will serve? And so I'm just wondering if they've met that requirement technically.
Well, the final plat documents that they show us show that they are going to create, they're going to have force means and they're going to pump it up to the gravity through the subdivision to the north. Pumping sewage through, I mean, that's not optimal, but I don't think we have anything in our code that prohibits that type of a system if it's designed correctly. My understanding is once approved of final, the final plat with these conditions, they would need to submit the construction drawings proving that, that they would be sufficient both for us as well as for Mountain Green Sewer Improvement District.
Okay. It looks like Mr. Gray would like to say something. I was a representative of the sewer district. Is that correct?
Yep. I asked him to be here.
Okay, perfect.
Also, Chief Rendell's here as well.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions for Josh before we hear from the sewer district representative?
Just about the soils report. Have you got that yet?
The engineer reviewed everything that we, we got. He had no comments about the soils report.
And you've had all the geologic things also done?
Uh, that's part of the preliminary plat approval, which they received last year.
Just want to make sure it's been done again.
So technically, they don't have to do it again if they did it as part of the preliminary plat and received approval for the preliminary plat. The final plat has specific check marks and the will serve letters are not part of the final plat. They're part of the preliminary plat. So after the final plat, they submit construction drawings to start doing the improvements and they receive approval to proceed with those construction drawings by the engineer through a pre-con meeting, through a Mountain Green Sewer Improvement District, through Highlands Water, and any other utility company where they're going to be putting utilities in. So final plat is receiving approval for that as the next step.
Okay.
So Josh, I'm going to go back to the access, the secondary access one more time.
Sure.
Given that that access would be terminating at, on Trapper's Loop on the, on the highway there, do we have anything from UDOT indicating that that's an acceptable access or secondary access?
Not yet.
Okay.
They would need to obtain that approval. It's kind of a lynchpin.
So in other words, they can't start doing the final. I mean, even if we approve this as a final and then UDOT comes back and says, no, you can't do it, then what happens?
Then they're not recording their plat.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I mean, cause to me, that's a, that's a pretty major component to this project is even if you have an easement for it, if that easement doesn't connect to a roadway that can legitimately, you can legitimately access, there's, there's really no secondary access.
That's correct.
So I guess I, I don't know, you know, where that lands in the process. You're saying they wouldn't be able to record if that was the case. I mean, to me, I'm thinking, well, why would we approve the final plat if we don't have anything from UDOT indicating that yes, there is a secondary access? Again, though, going back to our discussion earlier, I would hope that the approval from UDOT is an access through the other subdivision and not a temporary access, but that's, we can't rely on one over the other.
Yeah, I can't speak for UDOT.
Okay. So who verifies that before they can record is the question?
We would verify that.
Through, through this, through planning department, not through the recorder's office?
Yeah, UDOT sends me application meetings that they have with developers with a Zoom invite and I've been attending those and listening.
Okay. Okay, perfect.
Can I say something? I've got Kirk on the phone with me. I'm Kirk's brother. He says UDOT put that access in when, when they were doing the Trapper's Loop. They put that access in, so it's already there. They already approved it and.
Do we have any documentation from them indicating that, that it can be used?
The asphalt's in place.
Do we have?
The asphalt's there. I don't know.
Okay.
It's a farm access, isn't it?
I think that's what, that's the question that we need answered is, is there, is there something in writing from UDOT that indicates that that's a legitimate access?
And it may already be an approved access, is what you're saying.
It sounds like it may be. And if so, that should be a simple, you know.
Just to get a, a letter from the state.
Confirmation from UDOT saying, yes, this is an access.
Okay. Cause I know there is an access there. It was, it was supposed to have been done with Trapper's Point subdivision from what I heard.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we're talking about potentially two different points of access there, but.
They might terminate in roughly the same location. As I recall, the other one was out in that corner.
Yeah, they're pretty close.
No, it's the same access.
Okay. Well, in any event, if, if we add a condition that it's an UDOT-approved point of access constructed as an all-weather fire apparatus supporting secondary access facility, then we can get the documentation that you guys say is in place and impose the requirement.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. All right, let's hear from the sewer district. That's.
Thank you. My name is Zane Gray, Board of Trustees for the Mountain Green Sewer Improvement District. I simply wanted to clarify definition of our will serve because it is conditional. It's not full-fledged well, will serve. And I was hoping to thank you, Josh, and Zane. When you read off your contingencies or stipulations for your recommendation to approve, I didn't hear about our contingencies being listed there anywhere or the UDOT documentation you're going to need. So if that's something that can be added, that would be nice. But the definition of our will serve is that we are not supplying a sewer line. We are not maintaining a sewer line to Frontier Estates. Frontier Estates is willing to go through the trouble to pump under pressure from each individual lot, the sewer uphill to Trapper's Point and dump it into a manhole there on Frontier, the road called Frontier. Our stipulations are that they, of course, abide by all of the current design issues and policies set in place and ordinances, but also that they, forgive me, I had that letter here in front of me a minute ago. That they present with us a plan for accomplishing that sewer line up to dump into our, into our system. Right now, the argument is if they come up with a, a legitimate, safe plan for pressure lines to move the sewer uphill into our system, the Sewer Board might consider taking responsibility for those lines. But at this point, some of us are against it and some of us are trying to, to find a way to accommodate that request. My, my personal vote has been that the sewer line system is, is something that no normal homeowner would expect to be responsible for when they buy a new home or a lot. It's not a normality and it, I don't know what the complications there can be. I'm not an engineer and not that well-knowledge about, I don't have that much knowledge about pressure lines for sewer, especially uphill. My objectives are simply to find that we're not supplying or maintaining a sewer to or from Frontier Estates.
Well, at least until the point where you take the sewer and it gravity feeds to your system.
Then we, our will serve can be interpreted to say we'll take their liquid. That's the extent of the will serve at this point.
So if they were to come up with a, another viable way to get it to you, they would not have to have a grind pump or anything like that to put, go north.
Right.
And uphill. So, and this is not for you, but for, it's for the applicant. So my question is, is if this other, if the Warner, I mean, it's like putting the cart before the horse. If the Warner's already putting in their development, can't Frontier Estates wait? I know it's time. Trust me, I know what time is more than most. But if you have, I mean, it's coming along. The Warner Estates is coming along quicker than I thought it was going to be. But now I'm glad it's there. So why can't they just wait, get that into the plans, put it in, and he's, might just have to wait until the horse gets in front of the cart? That's my opinion.
Well, so that's not a question that he can answer, but, but the question that is relevant is if that subdivision was in, would they be able to gravity feed to your system?
No, because Warner's all, will own all the land between Frontier Estates and our connection that goes down Trapper's Loop Road.
But if, if the Warner West subdivision is approved and constructed, there's a road that's coming up and connecting into Frontier Estates. And that road presumably is going to include sewer lines. And so if they made the connection there, it would gravity feed.
Yes, it would. I think it would. I think that seemed to be a.
Cause right now, what the problem is, they can't gravity feed because they don't, they've got an access easement, but they don't have a sewer facilities easement to run downhill.
Yeah.
That seemed like an answer to the sewer, sewer problems challenging Frontier Estates.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions for the sewer district representative? I appreciate your comments. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So Josh, I do have a question for you now. Zane's brought up some interesting comments and thoughts and something that I think we need to address. And I'm going to ask you to maybe turn that off because it's distracting.
Kirk would like to explain something about. He says it's been approved already by the Sewer District Board. Evidently, he's the only one that voted against it. And now that he's the chairman, he's bringing him forward. So that's, that's the way that Kirk understands.
Sounds like we need some official documentation from the Sewer Board.
It's already been approved, the grinder pump system.
Certainly not.
Okay, so, but Josh, my question is this. If, if in fact, now I don't know what to, to think or believe frankly, but let's assume for a moment that, that the, the developer has to come up with the plan, right, to, to pump the sewage uphill and this, and the Sewer district says, that's fine, but we're not taking responsibility for the sewer lines within the subdivision, which sounds like would be the case, and potentially outside of the subdivision if they have to pump uphill to a certain point. We've got lines that now we've got to establish who owns those. And it seems to me that either they're going to have to have a, a community, I don't know if it's an HOA that owns the system or the lines or, or some type of joint ownership. And it also probably ought to be listed on the plat because as a homeowner or a lot owner, I don't want to go buy a lot and find out I've also got responsibility for these sewer lines that exist in the street in front of my home or, or in the subdivision next door potentially, which sounds like would be the case. Cause it sounds to me like it'd have to be pumped through a line uphill to a point where it can gravity feed. That's also a line that's got to go under a county road, which we don't have any type of discussion on how that's going to get there and who's going to maintain it and that.
How is that sewer ran now? How is that hill that's come down there, gravity feeding now?
That's a good question. Are those, are those on ejector pumps?
You mean the Trapper's?
The current homes that.
I think as you leave Trapper's Loop, you, you lose elevation into Frontier Estates. So to get back up to the uppermost.
To the point.
Manhole where it starts to gravity feed down, they have to pump back up. That's what I think's happening.
But I guess, my question is this. It seems to me that we need some answers to these questions to know if it needs to be on the plat or not, because I wouldn't want to buy a lot and then find out I have a legal obligation. I mean, apparently we had a lot owner just a few minutes ago that found out he had a 99-year lease on his property. Certainly wouldn't want that to be an issue. And it sounds like there's some question as to the sewer availability.
So do you have their updated will serve letter?
Uh, yeah. Mountain Green Sewer Improvement District emailed that to me earlier today.
Okay.
Do you have a copy of it?
Do you have a copy of it?
Yeah.
You know what it says?
Give me a chance to find it.
I'm just wondering if there's any way to find out if Trapper's Loop subdivision, if they actually do pump up or if it is gravity flow into the sewer system.
We don't pump up.
What's, what's that?
We don't pump up.
You don't pump up?
No.
Okay, I didn't think so because, because when you're building and, you know, you guys say, well, how many things have you done in your life? Well, when I was 16, 17, 18 years old, I did work on it, on, with a company that put in sewer lines and water lines. And they would have to dig deeper on all ends to get it so that gravity flows in a certain angle. So it could be that way at this case. And Frontier Estates is the only one that.
Want me to read the letter to you?
Sure.
That'd be great.
Says, "The Board of Trustees of the Mountain Green Sewer Improvement District, MGSID, met on July 7th, 2021 and granted your request for 10 equivalent residential units, ERUs homes." Excuse me, ma'am. This is the letter I got today. Thank you. In sanitary sewer connections for the Frontier Estates Development Subject 2, all district standards including verification of subsurface drain.
standards including verification of subsurface drainage is one. Number two, final review and approval of the board as to the design and delivery of the waste to the MGSID system. This may require 10 individual private pressure laterals along the roadway to the existing manhole. Due to the approval being over a year ago, it is required that an annual standby fee be paid for any reserve capacity developed and subdivided or not serviced. On October 31st, 2022, payment was made to the MGSID for the annual standby fee. As such, this allows Frontier Estates another year for the will serve." And then it's signed Jeremy Sorenson.
So it's approved, subject to approval of the design drawings for the project. So let me, so I'm thinking if the additional condition is that the construction drawings for sewer and water systems be approved by the applicable utility provider prior to recording the plat and/or commencement of construction, which approval shall be communicated to the county in writing. And presumably, they wouldn't sign the plat until they approved it.
That's correct.
If there are private components of the sewer system that the plat include an affirmative disclosure clearly stating that such component shall be HOA or privately maintained. And then the other condition is that with respect to the access, that it be secondary access, that it's UDOT-approved point of access constructed to be an all-weather fire apparatus supporting secondary access facility. You've already indicated that it needs to be constructed or bonded for as part of the completion assurance posted with the county at the time of recordation, so I think that's clear.
I have one more question. So if they're not using injector pumps to, in the previous subdivision, the adjoining subdivision, is the Sewer District saying if they inject sewer up to, apparently, they all gravity flow, if they inject up to the gravity flow area, are they saying they're taking that out of what they're going to service also?
You might want to ask Mr. Gray that, but my understanding is the force mains, they pump the sewage up, and they dump it into a connection
That gravity flows.
That gravity, then, gravity flows.
So the, the other homeowners in the rest of the HOA are covered under the, I'm assuming, under the water, or the Sewer District. All their lines are taken care of.
Trapper's Point, yes.
So the only people that we're concerned about is the people buying the lots that are injecting it up to a gravity flow area.
Right.
Okay, that, that helps me. Okay.
How much of an elevation is there between Frontier, Frontier Estates and the Trapper's Loop?
I'll see if I can read it on these drawings. Oh, I brought, no, I brought the While you're looking at that, Commissioner McCollum brought up a point that I had not fully considered, and that is the fact that the Sewer District will be required to sign this plat before recordation, correct? A representative of the Sewer District will sign the, the final plat?
I
Or is there not a space for that?
I thought there was a space.
I'm looking right now. Weaver Morgan Health Department, Morgan County Planning Mission, Morgan County Attorney, Morgan County Engineer, Owners Dedication, Highlands Water Company, and Mountain Green Sewer District all have signature lines.
Okay. So that's our check to ensure that, that that occurs and occurs to the Sewer District's satisfaction, which I think is, is the concern that we're all getting at.
It's a 60-foot elevation drop.
Oh, okay.
It's a big dig.
And you indicated you, you also have an updated will serve from the water company?
That's correct.
Are there any conditions on that will serve?
No. Yes, there are.
On the water will serve?
Oh, I'm sorry. You said water.
Yeah, water, I'm sorry.
I apologize.
No, yeah, the sewer one, I, I understand the conditions on that, and, and those make sense to me. That's exactly, I think, what, what Zane described was the conditions that you read. And again, our check on that is, of course, the Sewer District has to sign off on this plat before it can actually record. So if, for some reason, the, the developer isn't able to design it to the specs that the Sewer District requires, they're not going to sign it, they don't have sewage access, it doesn't
That's correct.
But, yeah, the question was regarding the water, if there was conditions on the water connection. Sounds like there's not conditions.
There are not.
Okay, and then in terms of, of fire, Chief Brindellis, is there anything that you'd like to address on this particular item?
I think you, you guys covered it pretty well. The only thing is that on the proposed final plat, there's no indication that I, there's some notification that I asked to be put on there that was not put on there regarding the construction requirements of the Fire District, but in particular, the secondary fire apparatus access road, all that's shown on the final plat is the entrance to that secondary fire apparatus access road. There is no plan about it, there is no mention of it. There is a mention of the granting of an egress to the Fire District, but that's an access egress, and it has no bearing really on how the fire apparatus access road is going to be constructed. So that is a major condition for the Fire District to approve the, the project, but should those be addressed, then we can move forward, but it's not on the plat?
Yeah, I, I was just looking at that plat, and you're right, it, it points to where that easement, and it indicates there's an easement, but it doesn't actually show the easement even through the, and I understand why it wouldn't, the, the entire length, right, but through the subdivision, it's not showing where that actually connects to the road, it's just showing an arrow at the back of the lot. In my mind, it ought to show that connecting clear to the road where there would be public access to it, because otherwise, somebody's going to buy Lot 10 and be surprised when everybody needs to drive their car through their yard to get out. Obviously, it won't be a yard, it'd have to be a fire-approved road, but the sentiment remains.
And if that is vacated, if Warner West does go through, we're fine with that. I mean, it doesn't necessarily have to be there. If we can get a secondary fire apparatus access road, we're good with that.
Might be a good condition to keep it there. Move the whole subdivision down just a bit, keep it there as a secondary egress, just for the purpose of the fire, because right now, they're, they've got one through Trapper's Loop, and they've got one through the new, the Warner West. So that's just a thought. Take it as is, or whatever.
That affects the other owners pretty significantly. So Chief Brindell, one of the things that's identified as a condition is that the county engineer, surveyor, and Mountain Green Fire Protection District concerns and comments are addressed prior to recordation, and your comments were attached. So does that cover your concern?
Um, well, generally speaking, the International Fire Code calls for when construction commences that the fire apparatus access should be addressed during construction. They leave that kind of vague. I know that we have the Warner West potentially being, going forward also. We want to be reasonable and not require that road if it's not required, except Commissioner Fackel, his comments, but as far as the Fire District is concerned, I want two accesses. So however we can come to an agreement with that, I'm amenable.
So the, but the first condition listed indicates that prior to recordation, the secondary access shall be constructed or shall be included as a line item in the completion assurance they've posted for completion of it.
Good, yes.
And I certainly would like to see that delineated on the, on the plat itself, as well as something that addresses what happens if the Sewer District does in fact say, hey, we're not going to accept the lines within the subdivision, that's somebody else's responsibility. There's got to be something listed on the plat that indicates, you know, a note that indicates that, just to protect those potential lot owners. Any other questions?
I don't have any.
For me personally, I'd like to see a few of these things taken care of before we approve it, instead of approving it with conditions, because there's enough of them, but I'm open to the suggestions of the commission, for sure.
I'll just, what do you?
I, I, I think, you know, I think that's a good way to go. It doesn't, I don't think it slows anything down, does it?
I, I mean, I don't know what the timeline is of the developer, but we need to know, this access thing is a, is a major
You got to know from the state.
We got to know from UDOT if they can actually legitimately access it there. There may be a gate to access a farm, and that's great, that's fine, right, but we've got to know if that's legit or not, and have some documentation of it. We've got to see that access on the documentation, and I think the sewer issue is, is a big one, and needs to be fully addressed, but those are my thoughts. There are checks here to, to probably address each of those in that there's various entities that have to sign the plat before it can actually record, so, you know, to that degree, maybe, maybe there's enough checks. UDOT's not one of them, so that probably wouldn't be addressed in that, but certainly staff could address it.
So are they up against their deadline for getting the final plat approved?
Yeah, they are. The fifth, the ninth is their deadline.
Ninth of November.
We have the ability to extend that, though, don't we?
Yeah, so Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we extend the preliminary plat approval, or I guess the final plat approval deadline through the end of calendar year 2022, and further move that we continue the Frontier Estates' final plat approval until our November 22nd meeting for purposes of adding the additional conditions of approval that have been discussed tonight and confirmation of those points of clarification that we've asked about.
It is November 22nd.
That was kind of a run-on sentence, I apologize.
Isn't November 22nd enough time, or not?
Oh, I, I think most of these conditions can be, the additional conditions, I think, can be carefully drafted.
It sounds like most of them already have been asked, frankly.
The access may already exist, so that shouldn't be particularly difficult. I think that there ought to be some care to the note that's included on the plat with respect to the disclosure of the potential privately-owned sewer system components, but I think, I think it could certainly be done by November 22nd, if the applicant's willing to do that.
And I'll second that.
Okay, you have a comment?
Just, just one, one point of clarification. If, if you extend the, to the, you know, two weeks from tonight, the preliminary expires on the 9th of October, and that being extended also, so we don't have to
Yeah, I included that in my motion.
I included that, but yes, that was included to extend it through the end of the year, which should give you plenty of time, because I know you are up against it, a deadline, and our intention is not to, to cause grief in that, that manner at all, so, okay.
So I'll
So we have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. All right, we will move to our Commissioner's comments, Commissioner Fackel.
Oh, man, let me get the list. We have, okay, one of the things that I have, anyway, in September, or October, I was at a, the One Utah Summit, and I met with the college president, the college, or the university's president, and the dean of master of public, public administration, and since then, Josh and I have had some different comments on, I mean, we had a webinar with them about internships and special projects, and they are willing to work with us and partner with us if we want to for possibly, let me just give you a preliminary. Utah, Southern Utah University requires the majority of their students to go through an internship before they graduate now, and, and because of that, it's making people better suited for the workforce when they get out. And so one of those things that we've discussed, Josh, and I know he's been working with them individually now, on potentially getting interns that would come to our county and actually assist us in our different departments, such where we have problems of finding Planners, planners, and recording things, assessing, whatever it might be, if we need additional help. And they were also mentioning that they would like to do some special projects down at the university if we are interested in it. They can do a lot of research for us, maybe they could do our analysis, that we want to find out how much it costs for different, you know, to put into projects such as this that we discussed earlier on our fee schedules. Anyway, it's, it's just an opportunity, and that's just one of the things that it would be nice to consider in all the departments. I would like to send out an email to all the department heads and see if them, if any of them have any special projects they would like Utah, Southern Utah University to work with, their students, to give them some work experiences.
Is there any financial obligation? I assume these are unpaid internships.
These are un, well, depends. And then if they come up here, if they come to our county and works with Josh as an intern, then, and it may be for a six-month period of time, and they work directly with him, and he's still working out details with them, that would be a, and this is an option for us, is to have a, an intern that works at a certain little amount, and, I mean, there's so many potentials, we could possibly have them even have a stipend for their tuition or something like that, and then they have to commit to working for us for a couple of years afterward, or two or three years, or whatever. I had that when I went to college to get my teaching degree, is I had to stay in a
Maybe our department heads could get creative with that.
Yes.
You're just looking for a head nod to send an email out to the departments to start, that it's an option they could
It's an option they can look at, and so that's, that's one of the things I'd like to do if possible. And then, of course, our economic development, Robert and I have been in conversations with EDC Utah, and a membership in that, it would cost us approximately $1,240 is what James found, found out for us today, $1,230, I guess it was, and a year to have them be able to send people to us. Robert, you can speak to it a little bit more when you get to that, or now.
Well, so EDC, that, they, they do a lot of research with respect to economic development opportunities within the state, and people will come to them, companies will come to them and say, we want to locate in your state, these are our requirements, what jurisdictions do you recommend? We probably don't have the, the base load structure to be one of the candidates for that, but maybe, you never know.
Just to prove five commercial lots, Robert.
That's right, that's right. That's right. We might be able to find the right restaurants. But, but what it may be useful to get is, to get the But, but what it may be useful to get is to get the information so that we know, look, this is what these different companies are looking for. So as part of our planning, in addition to land use planning, where things are located, you know, what are the infrastructure requirements? What are the requirements that are looking for in terms of local and local employment base, you know, and that kind of thing? So, so I'm, I'm not thinking that that $1,200 is going to successfully land us something this year, but it might get us information that would be useful in terms of economic development planning generally.
Yeah, that's basically what I wanted your help with.
Hundred bucks a month seems like a pretty inexpensive way to help.
Way to get that information.
Right. And the nice thing is that could be taken out of the grant, the rural grant, so we wouldn't have to come out of it from our property, our general fund. Okay? And then another thing is, is coordinated council. We have to have some kind of a coordinating council for something. You guys read part of that in your emails and we have to have that by July or we can be in default of something for next year. I don't understand it all, so I just thought I'd bring it up and ask a discussion on it.
So as part of the Utah, your UAC meetings, they're the ones that proposed a potential coordinating council with other commissions or other counties. What, what was that even about?
It was HB.
So it's a, it's a law now?
Yeah, it's a law. Well, it was according to what.
Is that their attempt to ensure that.
Tina would say it's another uncoordinated mandate.
HB 179.
Both Tina's would say that.
So, yeah.
Well, we don't want to be translated. We need to be, you know, in default of something.
No, I would ra, I would rather us be translated than be in default.
That sounds like. That's what you're worried about.
It's basically HB 179, July of 2023, it's a, it's coordinating councils in local, in a local environment. And since we are in conjunction with Weaver, should we be having our own coordinate council? And that was what I got from my last.
Well, and it could be in conjunction with Weaver Summit.
Davis.
Box elders.
Can we do an interlocal agreement and just be a part of that?
Yeah, that's, but I think UAC, what happened was they sent an email saying, do you want to do it on a combined basis or individually? And I think I responded, say, we want to be on the combined. So there might be a discussion of that at your meetings and you might want to see where that's at because there's no way that we want to just do it on our own from my perspective.
Okay, all right. Also, we have the Governor's Trails Initiative that was announced last, when was it? Last Thursday?
Last week.
And so you guys are aware of that one where he wants to have every city, town in the state of Utah connected by a paved trail. Now I'm just hoping they come up with the funds to give to us to help us do that. Currently, they're saying it's going to be a 40% match. So either way, we'll be working on that.
We've got a long distance between us and other cities. That isn't going to happen anytime soon at a 40% match.
Well, the thing is, is we're not that far away from where they've already got it. Weaver has already got a plan to come around. They want Trapper's Loop in particular to be connecting. They would, will like us to go down through the canyon. Our part's going to be easy. It's going to be their part coming up.
Just, just on that coordinating council, it's the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council. So Garrett, you might also want to be involved in that discussion.
And so that's something that Melissa proposed that we do an interlocal agreement on because they, they're supposed to be feeding us information as it is right now and they're not doing it, so.
Okay.
Anyway, I'll, I'll share that stuff with you when it comes my turn.
Okay. Just a big thanks to the chamber for putting on a good Halloween business, business, Halloween. If anybody was in, in that, I took my kids to that, grandkids, and also the Young Auto Group also put one on last Saturday that was four hours long. Trust me, I'm dead still tired from it. And the, there's a lot of economic opportunities that are happening in the county right now. Wild Valley Farms is, is trying to get in a plant to actually do the processing of their pellets so that they can start sending things out worldwide instead of just here, or instead of just in the United States. Also, the Meet the Money event last week was excellent group of people. There was probably about 40 people, businesses that came in, not just the ones that had the money, but those that were trying to look for money. So that was a good thing that happened. And then I need to have some help with everybody, whether it's public, you guys or whoever, that I need to know where there's a deficiency in cellular service in this county, all of it. And I need to get that so that we could try to, I'm trying to create a map of that, those areas, so we can have better communication throughout the county. I know Croydon is a huge problem area between Croydon end of the road to Lost Creek in such a way that it actually affects our calling or our service of safety, welfare, and health of the, of the community. Because as Brett Heiner puts it, he, as he, when he's plowing in the wintertime, he says to his people that he, when he's, if he's not back in two hours, you better send the posse out because there's no cell service out there. And then we need to continue working with the arc of dollars figuring out that plan because we only have till next year to have the plan out. Our treasurer and the, and the clerk has been advised as to how to get the rest of the money. And then I just want to remind anybody who's attending the Thursday 4:00 PM meeting up in Colville, if anybody is.
That's the Utah Lands.
Utah Lands?
I am.
Okay, all right. And then, who's going to answer the golf course thing? Anybody?
Jared.
Jared?
Yeah, I'll have to give you an update on that when he's back.
No, I don't mean that. I meant the one that we need to send to UAC that requested that.
We don't have one.
We don't have one, but who wants to respond to that? Do you want me to? Do you want, who do you want to?
Doesn't say you're supposed to respond if you don't have one?
Yeah, we need to respond one way or the other. So who would like to?
That's not what I understood.
Yeah, because everybody's been, everybody's been coming, or not coming, but saying they don't have one or they do have one. So that's what they want to know. Do we have any?
I'll, I'll hit reply and hit and we don't have one.
All right. I just don't want to take over anybody else's job. Okay, and then the plan for the fairgrounds, everybody's, I don't know if you reviewed that last time, Jared sent it out to us. I just kind of like your thoughts on that. Or we can save it for another date.
Well, I think we need to probably have a, a work session to discuss that. There's several things that I think are lacking on that plan.
Okay.
It was, it was designed, I think, mostly thinking of.
Rec.
Of rec and not of agricultural uses of the fairgrounds.
Okay.
Or, or other alternative recreation.
Right.
River recreation.
Yeah, because I, I still think, I was looking at Reno's Whitewater Park and they, they just have an amazing whitewater park that does really, really well for them and we have a great setup for them.
We have the perfect location for something like that, a county-owned land. It would be low cost, I think, to, to put in and bring a lot of people to the town, to, to Morgan City.
There was actually a resident up in Mountain Green was interested in trying to develop something like that if you.
Really?
It's an idea.
Reno's was.
Private partnership.
Owned privately before they ended up with it, but I don't know how that went or if they bought it, but.
So what we need to do is maybe put it in the, in one of our few, first few meetings in the month of January if by chance it's not ready to go between, because it sounds like we're kind of busy between now and the end of the year. Just maybe a thought to put it in the first of January or something.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
Okay, that's it for now.
Okay, Commissioner McConnell.
I don't have anything for you.
I just have one piece of, I guess, information. This evening, the fire department, EMS department began the first ever EMT course that's completely coordinated and taught by our local folks.
Oh.
Which is a, I think, a momentous occasion. We've, we've relied on outside help to, to teach those courses. We have the skills and the ability to do that all in-house, which is pretty awesome. So the chief sent me a, a picture of the training tables laid out with all their books and manuals ready to go. He was excited about it, so.
That's cool.
Appreciate our local firefighters and EMTs, volunteers that dedicate their time to that. I know your wife does that and we sure appreciate her and everybody that does. That's all I have. Commissioner Wilson.
Well, one thing for Blaine, we have 53 fleet.
Oh, good. Okay.
Automobiles. Two here.
That's almost as many as employees we've got.
Two, two in the county, 16 Brett has, 14.
Can you send me that breakdown?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Because we are under, in our insurance policy with USIP, they're classified how many vehicles are in it and they're charging us accordingly for our insurance cost.
And we've got to make sure.
So, and, and I just need to make sure what we've got, what is ambulances, what is all the other, you know, what kinds we have. So that's why I was asking Matt to figure out for me.
Okay, and secondly, Jeremy was good enough to get pricing for the, the gun range for the keyless lock.
Oh, cool.
It's pretty, it's pretty pricey, 1,500 bucks just for the lock. And then they want, they feel like it should have a roller, so you put in concrete and a roller fence in and then you're running power to it as well. I told him, he was going to get pricing for all that and I just said, I don't think we're there yet, so. That's, I mean, based on what Brett.
Take a while, 10 bucks a pop to make that up.
Based on what Brett submitted for their gate that had some electronics to it, it was like 30 grand. And so I just told him to hold off until I talk to you guys, unless somebody feels really strongly about that, we'll figure something out, else out, that's, that we can do. And then lastly, the, I met with Melissa Freegang. I would like to get her in a work session with us. She's just extremely good at helping people with addictions and has done amazing things for Weaver, just literally amazing things. And she's, she keeps all her data and the successes and, and stuff. Her focus is more on the post, helping people as soon as they're out of recovery rather, or out of addiction recovery rather than just sending them back on the street and saying, it's focusing on getting them housing, getting them a job, getting them all this stuff. And, and so she has some awesome ideas. Obviously, we don't have enough settlement coming to do that fully, but she, she talked about doing something interlocal that, that we could put a portion towards and then, and then that gives her the opportunity to work in our behalf to bring us that information and, and train people that would, would do that. So I just, I'd like you to hear her and I can help her present what she did, but sharp gal, really sharp gal.
Do we have to have a, a plan or anything of how we're going to use that money, those opioid?
Yes, but there's, there's a, I mean, there's such a range of ways that you can use it. It'd be hard not to have a, a way to use it.
So in other words, she would come up here and let us know or talk to us about the different things that we could possibly be using that money, even though we don't have a lot.
Yeah, I have a list of that I can send to you. You should have actually got an email with a list of it all, so I can share that with you. But we kind of went through that stuff and kind of said, what, what's our need up here? You know? And, and so, and I've had a few friends and things go through addiction recovery and it's, unless you have something for them after the fact, it's almost, but anyway, she said, we, there is millions and millions and millions of dollars to help these people, not just, not to just send them through rehab, but to help them after the fact that's available. It's, you submit for it and it, you can get it, so.
Okay.
So anyway, I'd like you to hear what she has to say and we can go from there.
That sounds great.
That's all I have.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we go into closed meeting to discuss pending litigation.
And do we need anything else? Property updates, property sale updates?
Yeah, we can maybe talk about that one too. Purchaser sale of real property.
Yeah, purchaser sale of real property. And do we have another one on competency of the individuals or not?
I think we're good.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion to go into closed session. This will be a roll call vote. Commissioner Fackel.
Aye.
Commissioner McConnell.
Aye.
I vote aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
We have breaks.
Yes.